Good afternoon, everyone. Friday, November 8th, our board organizational workshop. And our agenda basically is... Do we have an agenda review? Agenda review, protocol revisions, are we doing protocol revisions? The calendar, we'll take a 15-minute break. We will talk about committee liaisons, board priorities, the board vice chair, chair and vice chair, and next steps. And in order to facilitate this, I'm going to turn it over to Cindy McQuann.
Good afternoon.
And Carol Cook, and she'll introduce our other speaker.
Thank you. And the agenda review that is on there was just the agenda for this afternoon, which you just did.
Oh.
So we're in good shape there.
Okay. That was quick.
So this morning, your discussion, kind of a wrap-up of that, is a quote up here that Carol wanted to be sure everyone had a chance to see. I know the lighting is kind of all... Can everyone read it from where you are?
How quickly can we do?
Is it on our hand now?
There it goes.
Basically, self-control is strength. Calmness is mastery. You have to get to a point where your mood doesn't shift based on the insignificant actions of someone else. Don't allow others to control the direction of your life, and don't allow your emotions to overpower your intellect or your intelligence. That wraps up everything in a tight little nutshell of what we talked about this morning.
Thank you.
And I guess for the beauty of audience, would you like to introduce yourself, Carol, since we're now being...
Oh, okay. All right. I'm Carol Cook. I'm with Florida School Boards Association as a leadership development consultant.
Thank you. And this morning's work on emotional intelligence, as she said, has certainly wrapped up in that core. We have a couple of... We've already gone through the agenda, so I'm going to skip right through that. And we have a couple of other comments here that Carol's provided from the Maryland School Board Association, talking about what really embodies... What is a good school board embody? Being supportive, respectful, trustworthy, fair, being good communicators and professional, but really making sure that our focus is always on improved student learning. So as we keep that in mind, the discussion is open now for our protocols. So each of you received a copy of the procedures manual. And at earlier workshops, there had been some discussion about some possible changes. So these are all around liaison positions. So at this point, I'm just going to go ahead and open it up for discussion.
Well, I guess I'll start in that a couple of the suggestions that I could give. One was to align our choice of liaisons, all of them to the fiscal year, and that would be in June. I spoke with some other districts and also with Andrea Mathina about that, and the difficulty would be... It would be fine for the FSBA liaison and the consortium liaison, but in order to do it, that would mean if we get someone new in November, they wouldn't be able to take over, I mean, select until the next June. So I thought about it, and I would be willing to adjust that, just to say that we have in protocol that our FSBA and our consortium liaison be in June. So if we can hear anyone else's thoughts on that?
Actually, I remember discussing this at lunchtime, and Carol said that their school board does follow this, so I'd asked her if we speak up about that.
When we're talking about the legislative liaison and the board of directors, that is in the Florida School Board Association bylaws. You will elect those in June. The board of directors, you elect every other year to serve on there. A lot of the districts will have the same person for the greater Florida. It's just a legislative liaison. And when I was reading some of the materials, it looked like Andrea was saying that they didn't have a federal person. Well, the federal platform is developed at the same time as the state. So the same person is the one that, according to FSBA, the same person does both because they're in the same meeting. And so you would be choosing or deciding whether you wanted to do one legislative person for all three, and if that's the case, then all three would have to be in June, because you have to abide by the FSBA bylaws. And then your other committees, you could have whatever discussion you wanted to.
So this would be two positions. One would be FSBA liaison, state, and federal, and then consortium.
The consortium?
No, but I'm saying this one person would do all, and then that board of directors is a separate.
Correct. Correct. All of which, then, if it's the same person, all of them would be decided by June.
Or July first.
Yeah.
Just keeps... Signal keeps getting off. The other discussion was around those board advisory liaisons.
Yes, that's yours.
And that was, I believe, what Skittens was referring to in terms of whether to do them at the same time in June, so that you have one time and person has it for a full school year. The current protocol is that those are selected in November, which means that in some cases, someone comes in, comes to a September and an October meeting, and then they change liaisons. So that was that discussion. So are there other comments around that this morning?
Yeah, so I think we should change the liaisons in June as well. I think it's much better, much better for the advisory committees. And honestly, somebody new comes on the board, somebody's gone off. And there's no reason that that... Since we basically have a committee per person at this point, there's no reason that person just isn't spotted in.
Well, I agree as well, because when we started, like already, we've had three meetings. So for us to now be pulled out of something we've already started, it's kind of, it's harder, because we have that momentum going.
I agree.
Does anyone else have a comment? Okay, so the next portion of that is, do you want to start that as in now? If you stay on the committee you're in now, or do you want to start that as of the upcoming June?
I would say the upcoming June.
So everybody stays the same right now? We stay in June?
Well, when I proposed it, my thought was that we would rework in, you know, now, this November, and that would last until...
To June.
Until June. Now, what we could do is if we rework now for all of the advisories, like we have done before, then in June, just had the thought and I lost it. Then in June, we rework the advisory.
Could it all be reworked, didn't you?
Yeah.
Except for the board of directors, which is a two-year, unless that becomes up to June, which I believe actually does.
I would propose that we wait, only because I knew last year when we started, we had spoke about the possibility of doing that in a two years versus a year, because once... A year really is not enough time for you as a liaison to... You're trying to work on things and move on them, and now, once you have decided what you're going to move on, now you're putting all those things into place. So I would hate to see, and I'm going to speak on myself, be pulled out of EDAC when we're really now moving towards something and accomplishing things.
Can it be an individual...
Preference, I think it's a great decision, but I think... So here's the question I would pose. Who wants to change right now? Raise your hand.
Well, I want to change. I don't want to be the state and federal legislative liaison anymore, and that's the only issue here, is we have some crossover. You are the FSBA legislative liaison, and I am the state and federal legislative liaison. So I don't think I should keep that going into this legislative session, since you are the FSBA legislative liaison. I feel like you're in the weeds on that, on those issues, whereas I'm not. So that would be the only issue.
And I support that. I don't... I think that's a great idea. I mean, so I think it's time for...
I think I was talking more about the advisory.
Well, I was stupid. The decision last year around the advisories, when it was brought forward by a committee that proposed the two-year terms. And as a board, the decision was that if someone had been on the committee for a year, they had the option of choosing to stay for the second year. If someone had been on committee for two years, then they were encouraged to choose another committee. That was a discussion last year.
So then this is kind of a perfect compromise, because it will be here now. I mean, it'll be two and a half years, but I love it.
But the idea then would be that with the... If everybody agrees, you could change a few of the appointments now, not all of them. And then that would be until June, and then it would all change again, except for the two-year assignments.
So those are basically the two options. I'm not speaking of legislative one right now, but if you have to the other advisory committees, there are two options. You can choose to make changes from now until June, or you can... And then change. Or you can choose to stay as is until June and then change.
Well, to me, you run into the same issue. We change now and change again in June. If I get a new committee, then I may just feel like I'm getting traction in June, and now here I have to change, you know? So to me, it feels like the consistency is better, and the amount of work we can accomplish with groups we already know is facilitated better by staying where we are.
I can live with either way. However, it's a citizens' committee, and they are the ones... We're the liaisons to it. And basically, I feel like I could get traction with whichever group, because I don't... Sorry. Make, you know, I mean, I'm there as a liaison, not as facilitator, not as the boss, not as somebody who has an agenda where I want to get this done. That's up to the staff liaisons and the citizens. So, I mean, I... One of the reasons I'd like to change is because as a newer board member, it would be beneficial to me to get a taste of the different committees. And, you know, I mean, I can live with it either way, but it frankly makes me wonder if different members here, if we don't... I mean, we never had that real training that we had talked about, that all of us, whether we've been here for less than a year, or a year, or eight years, that we all proceed the same way in our groups. I'm disappointed that we... Because back, you probably remember, it's back when I was a citizen member of CSI, we talked about that the new chair people of the groups did not have the same way of running their meetings. It's gotten a little bit better.
They have had training around that.
Because there has been some training around it, but I feel like there's really a huge difference in the way we, as board members, approach our groups, just listening to the comments here.
I'm just going to suggest that you two switch, because the rest of us are comfortable where we are and are uncomfortable at this point about switching. You want to experience other committees, why don't you two just change?
Ms. Jeffonelli and then Stuart, for the...
No, I'm sorry, this issue...
Yeah, she had a grant taken.
Okay, so I think that doing it in concurrence with the school year makes more sense because of the change in the members of the committees authorized too. So it would be a smoother transition, but I don't know why individual members couldn't switch if they wanted to do that. And, you know, there's two schools of thought. Number one, if you're annually appointed, then you do get a taste of the different committees. If you're two years, then, you know, say you served four years, then you get to do two committees and probably do them well. But I think it's less... Congressman, for the citizen members and for us to have it compared with the school year. So...
So my two thoughts are, in June, the committee changes. So they're not the same people. That your citizens are different. So that changes, so that timing, I think, is perfect. We discussed having someone be on a board two years. I don't think after two years, you should... I think you need to move on. So like, and I'm just going from my personal experience. So the first year was on finance, then the next year was EDAC, and then now I'm on construction advisory. So I love the fact that I did one, one, and now I'm in construction. And I would like to... I personally would like to stay on construction advisory, unless somebody really wanted it, but I personally would like to stay on that. So that's just my opinion that if... I think you shouldn't stay in something longer than what we just discussed. It was a two-year plan. I mean, past that, then I think it's not allowing opportunity for someone else to have that opportunity. So you're eliminating the ability for someone new that came on that should have, you know... So that's why I said, if somebody... And then we probably should talk about if somebody wants my construction advisory. But I've only been on there once, so I'm going to try to hang on to it for the two. Because that was the plan. That was the agreement last year, was that if you've been on for one year and you wanted to remain for a second year, that you would be allowed to do that.
And why I would love to keep it, it's selfish reasons, because it does work with the strategic plan that I'm... That I have been given.
Championing.
Yeah, so collectively, that really works well together.
Well, the reason I was thinking about changing, actually, and no offense to anyone, I was really interested in finance, to the same reasons that Betsy was saying, to kind of expand and to see some other areas. And I've been on... I mean, I was advisory, the chair back, and been on that for, you know, several years. So I really would like an opportunity to try something different. And then we did say that after two years, that we really should switch.
So in... If we went until June, then you would have the opportunity to change in June. If we did it now, it seems like most people want to stay where they are for the time being. And you are... You're DAC, and I'm sorry, which committee are you in?
Curriculum. What about people who have already been on their committee for two years?
I'm the only one.
You're the only one.
Since I'm on my committee for two years. And I don't feel comfortable doing, getting a new committee in June after, like, I feel like it has to be...
Doing six months of a committee.
Where seven of us are doing the same thing, instead of two of us are doing this and three of us are doing that.
Yeah, I mean, I can live with it if... Either way, I'm definitely for the June.
Yeah. For that time forward. Ms. Gettys, can you live with this?
I guess I have no choice. I was thinking, because Chris had been for two years, that that was going to, to move to a different committee, but if they're saying two and a half, then, you know...
Well, I believe that if we had changed, if everyone were changing in November, then absolutely she would be moving to another committee. But if it's the decision of the group that you would like to wait until June and be consistent with the school year and with the new citizen members coming on, then it sounds like there's a good discussion around waiting and having everyone change in June to keep consistency.
I just... I wanted to talk about our role as a liaison, because it was... The way it was explained to me when I came on the board is that I work with the chair to put the agenda together. But first, I sit with the superintendent and/or staff members, you know, with his... Him facilitating those meetings to determine what are the big issues we're going to be facing this year. And you try to work with the committee chair to make sure that those issues are discussed as part of the agenda. So I just... I just... I'm not sure that's ever been said with this group.
It hasn't.
And so I really just wanted to repeat that out loud, because that's what was said to me when I came on board, so...
Well, then, that said, I mean, that never came to me. I never had that kind of training. That said, perhaps, and, you know, I can live with what we've just talked about, but it might behoove us to have a meeting about the liaisons and get it straight. You know, what should we be doing? What steps beyond our role as a liaison that infringes on the rights of this being a citizens' group?
Well, and I believe you refer back to policy, and I'll pull it up in a few minutes just to be sure. But I believe policy describes the situation that Ms. Trinkett just stated, was that the board... That the board member would work with the committee and provide direction on what the committee would work on that quarter or that year.
But that's why, I mean, like I said, I've been on that for some time, and that's what our executive meeting is for. And there's the staff liaison, like in this case, it's Dr. Spiro and myself, and, you know, his secretary, and then the rest of the members of the executive board. And that's what we do there and then. And Dr. Spiro's job is to have, you know, from the superintendent and from the committee brings forward anything, and we just kind of discuss it at the executive meeting. So it's kind of a different thing. And I believe someone said that every advisory does not have an executive.
That's correct. They do not have executive meetings.
So maybe that's something that should be in the protocol, because that would make it a smoother transition to...
I want to agree with Betsy Vaughn. I think we need to table this, and I think we need to come back to it at another time, because I think there are other things on the protocol we need to talk about, and we only have 45 minutes. So I think it's a conversation we need to have, and I'm not sure this is the time and place to have it.
And are you referring to the... How those... How the agendas are?
Correct.
Okay. So we can go back to... Or so did you have something?
Yeah, I was going to say that if you are going to have that conversation at another time, you also might want to think about bringing the chairman of those committees together, so that everybody is sitting in the same room, hearing the same thing at the same time. And then you can determine what it's going to be.
Thank you. So let's go back to the decision around when to change advisory liaisons for this year. What I heard from most people was that they preferred to wait until June, and I heard from the two of you that you could live with that. Can we come to consensus on that? Thumbs up, sideways down. Okay, so we have consensus. We have noted thumbs down, so we have consensus that you will remain on your current advisory committee liaison, as your current advisory committee liaison, until June, and then we'll change at that time. And at that time, anyone who has been on for one year may choose to continue, and those who have been on for two years need to rotate to a different committee.
And I just want to make sure that what Kathleen said, and I agree with, can we settle on a time? Who is it that would set?
I believe it would be during a workshop, so we would...
Well, but...
Unless you want a separate training.
I'll make sure that we set up a workshop.
Can we get a specific? Because too often, we'll say something, and then the wheels will spin for a couple of months, and then, oh, yeah. Because I think this is an important discussion to have.
Absolutely.
I'll get with Susan and Jennifer to make sure.
To determine who's going to be on what committee?
No, 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 no. Talk about how this is...
Set up a meeting.
So actually, the policy says that board appointments shall be made in the summer and affect their in September for two years.
For two years? Those are committee members, correct? Is that for board members?
Oh, oh, oh.
That's the committee members. I reappoint, yeah, I reappoint.
A school board member shall be assigned to each liaison.
So it's not...
Is there anything in that, Mary, that says when we should have training overall and set meetings with... I don't think that's...
I don't believe training is addressed, but it is addressed as to how the board moves or how the committee moves forward in the areas it will study. So we'll bring that back to workshop.
One other thing, just to comment on what you just said regarding things coming back. One of the reasons I've asked Jim to join us is when board members have something specific that's a follow-up action item, that she makes sure it gets down, and we're following up, because that wasn't always the case. And she also... She puts the board briefing and workshop items up in front of cabinet every week, and we work with the chair to try to get those things skidded. So I think you'll find that that's improved. Should have had a...
Okay, so the way we've covered... Oh, oh, do you want to go back to the group? Okay. So legislative liaison. And you would like to change... You are currently the federal?
And state.
And state. And Mrs. Jordan, you are currently FSBA?
Correct. And a consortium.
And I'm the alternate to Chris, right?
State.
For state and federal. Well, for federal.
So basically, Chris has just given the gavel to her. That's what... So, okay. Is everybody in agreement, I guess?
Well, rather than...
And you stay where you are. That doesn't change?
Well, why... Okay, in other situations, we move from the...
That's fine.
So we'll have one person who serves in both capacities. Is that going here?
Three capacities. Well, four capacities would be FSBA legislative liaison, the board's state legislative liaison, the consortium liaison, and the federal liaison. So one person doing four. How that is a departure from who my alternates are right now, but you are the FSBA legislative liaison. So to me, it makes sense to do that, because you're already in it.
I do those meetings.
Yeah, you're already in it.
Right. And so the alternate with states is Skittens, correct?
The only thing I would have thought to keep would have been Fed, but Rooney's gone, so that relationship is gone, so good luck making it.
For now. I'm optimistic. Is that similar to what is going on in other districts?
Yeah, most people will pick their state and federal person, and they're the same. Because there are only 11 districts that are involved with the consortium, they have an opportunity. Any board member can attend any of their meetings, any of the things that they do, but if it ever came to an official vote, then it's only your designated person. And it would make sense to do the same person in all three categories.
So I don't think this is our vote, then. This is just a... But I do think we need an alternate, because we have two different alternates right now, one for fed, one for state. So since she's doing it all, she needs one alternate.
And who is... And Ms. Skittens is one. I'll try to know who's the second one.
Ms. Ward.
Oh, I am.
Yes.
No, go for it.
I'm the alternate.
Sounds like she's okay giving it up.
You're the alternate for the board.
Oh, I... That's right.
You're the board.
Who is the alternate right now for the FSBA legislative liaison position?
Right.
When she beat her own.
And then, and you're fine with...
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, so consensus, like, we don't have to do a formal vote, but consensus that Ms. Jordan will take on all of those roles and Ms. Skittens will be her alternate. Okay? All right. Great. Thank you.
That's very efficient.
Next item was around travel budget in the protocol language. You have that. We discussed this a little bit at a prior workshop. There was some... The one item that you did come to consensus on was that if you were going somewhere in county and you were requesting reimbursement for mileage, it would be from the district office if that was a shorter distance from your home. But that was the only agreement that was made at that prior meeting. So there was some discussion about whether or not members would request mileage. Right now, that is... Obviously, that is allowable by law, and some years, board members have chosen not to request mileage, but there's never been... But that's by personal preference. And then the other discussion was around registrations and that if there was a purchase made of a registration or a ticket, and you were unable to do it, that you would try and find someone to take your place, and if that was not possible, that you would reimburse the district for that. So those were the two things that were discussed around in-county travel. So discussion on either of those.
So I didn't know... I didn't... I don't remember that discussion being around if mileage being reimbursed, whether it's cheaper from the office or from your home. What I remember is we're not charging... We agreed to not charge mileage from our home to the office. I thought that was what we had agreed to.
That may be correct. That's fine.
And that's on page 17, though. That was looking through the... But we can include that other stuff in the protocols if...
But I thought our mileage was being charged from the district to wherever anyways. That's what the MapQuest thing that I get, it starts from the office.
From the district office.
Yeah, not from my house or anything else.
If you're doing like a monthly mileage report, you... If you were doing like a monthly mileage report, you could claim it from your house to a school, instead of our building to a school, like employees have to do.
That's the way it is in policy. Policy, employees do it from the district, board members was stated from residence, and you had agreed to follow the employee policy.
We changed the board policy.
So we changed the board policy that we have to do it from the district?
I'm sorry?
We changed the board policy that it's from the district rather than home?
I don't believe the policy change came forward. I believe there was a consensus discussion.
So I, I'm, I'm just a little confused, and so where are we at this point with the mileage? With the employee or the board?
At this point, you had agreed to charge from the district if you chose to reimburse following any.
But, but the state, the, which is, which governs what we speak about? Or the state statute, the state statute?
We said by law. Your home.
Yeah, it was, it was purely an agreement. It's, you choose to.
Okay, so our policy was revised on September tenth, and it's in compliance with the statute. So that's always part of the revision.
And your policy says what?
And our policy says.
I think it was changed to include the out-of-county travel coming before the boards are approved. That's it. That was the change.
There was a statutory requirement that all.
To have approval.
Out-of-county travel had to be approved at a public meeting.
Exactly.
So what we don't have is a written protocol. And that's what we need.
But your protocols and your policy has to match. So if you have, because I believe I heard you say in policy, it says you take it from the residence. So if that's the case, then, and you want to do something different, you're gonna have to change policy. Cause they have to match.
But did we change the policy to say that?
No, no.
So right now, the policy has from residence.
Right.
So we would have to change policy to say from district.
Correct.
And we have not done that. And I honestly, it's a lot. There's a lot of driving. And I, it, it, you know, individually, it would help me if we were able to, you know, do the mileage. I don't know how much savings we're talking about, you know, for the district, for, you know, me to get mileage and we're all over the place. I mean, like, I, I went to Naples, I think, three times in the last couple of weeks for different things. And, you know, not just taking it personally, but especially with the reduction in, in the pay, it, it makes a difference.
And technically Naples is Collier. That's out of county, that's out of county. See?
Okay.
So I think we gotta get clear on that.
Oh, and it would have to be for schools purposes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more matching with the employees that it, that it all, I mean, it gets confusing. Oh, this from our house, but this from, I mean, why not just make it all from the district office, whatever the mileage is, and we're getting reimbursement?
Other thoughts? I think because the state statute says as a, I can't remember the number of the, if, for an elected official.
It is.
It is from your residence.
Residence.
That's the statute. That's what the state says.
And the employees do what?
Employees measure from district office.
Cause that's where they're, that's where they go to work at.
So what, what?
You're deemed to be doing your school board work from your residence. Even though you have an office at the school board, you're, you know, so you're, you're based for the, and your residence or your district. So that's probably why you're going, but you're ma, you're doing it differently than the employees. I think legally, you could do it either way. And you could do it as, I think it would be reasonable to do it as an individual choice based on, you know, your, your, your actual travel. In other words, if, if for a particular meeting, you are traveling from your home to a school, you could base your mileage request on that. But if another meeting, you're traveling from a school board workshop to a school, you could base your mileage request on that of where you're going from.
Well, because.
And you can do it based on actual miles from your actual, where you're actually going. What the law says you can't do is re, get reimbursed for travel from your home to the school board for a school board meeting, a school board election.
But if you're, like, if I'm going to a school in Lehigh, that's a much shorter distance for me. But for me to come from my home to anywhere else in Fort Myers, from out in Lehigh, that's a distance. So that's why I'm thinking to make it fair, cause it kind of depends on where you live. If you live far out or if you live close in. But if we followed the statute and did it for, you know, from home, then it would just be simpler.
It makes sense, it's that, it makes a lot of sense if that is your actual, you know, trip, if it actually originates in your home and.
So it sounds like we need a policy change.
I don't think we need a policy.
It is already there.
So it is.
We just changed it.
The policy, what it stands from home, and the protocol is from the district.
And that's what doesn't match.
So you need to change the protocol to match the policy.
But that says for employees, correct? For district employees, it doesn't say elected officials.
Right. Elected officials is from residence.
Right.
Correct.
So we just changed the protocol to match that. And then what I would just say was it's personal preference, that people can choose to put in the mileage.
Well, you could. I think you can always, you can always revert to actual mileage from where you went to where.
If it, yes.
We did that little exercise with the faces. I'm watching Susan. And I'm seeing, I'm seeing, oh my God. This is gonna be a nightmare, asking everybody, you're doing it from your home or you? I mean, can we just, I can live with whatever. I don't put in for in-county travel anyway, I can live with whatever. But can we just find something consistent that won't drive?
Well, if we, that's what we're saying.
She's only, she's only responsible for staff, for the school board. She doesn't have to use the staff.
Well, actually, it's Mary.
All right.
I'm here on Mary's behalf.
So if Mary appeared, what kind of expression would she have?
She'd say, oh, honey. She'd have her hands up.
You got them with the eyebrows. The bottom line is that we just choose what our policy says and just stick with that. I don't, and then not have a protocol as policies, did it do?
I, I hear most voices saying, let's just follow policy and make protocol match. So let's do a quick consensus on that.
Yes.
Done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Out of county, oh, let's go back to registrations. Which actually would be either in-county or out-of-county. Right now, there is, there's not anything written around if you, if a, if a ticket or a registration is purchased for you, if you need to reimburse the district if that is not used. And there doesn't, it's not in policy, you don't have to do that, but it was brought forward for discussion.
I, I think it was brought up because of the fact that, you know, it's just common courtesy, if you're going to say that you're gonna be somewhere, that we as a district had, the district has purchased tickets for, and then all of a sudden, you just decide not to show up, or we forget about it, or we book, whatever that reason may be, that expense should not have occurred. And I think that's why we collectively had spoke about, well, if we, if that were to take place and we would cover that ticket. We could, or find a person to get it, put somebody else in there. I think it was just us being.
And I felt, I felt we, I don't, I don't think there's any issues lately in a while. I don't, I think everybody's attending, right?
No.
Or getting someone else to attend.
Well, I was gonna suggest, this is an issue not just for things that we pay for, but for things that we are asked to attend as board members. And the expectation as a board member will be representing the board at that, at that meeting or whatever. And then that board member doesn't show up, and there's no board member there, that's really an affront to the organization, who is in effect our partner. So I think this is something we need to talk about, just as a matter of, I mean, yes, I think we should, that people should be reimbursing the district when they, when they don't use their ticket. But I also think there needs to be a written expectation that when you rep, when you sign up to represent the district or the board at any function, it is your responsibility to make certain that there is coverage if you can't, if you can't be there. It's embarrassing.
So let's, let's take that issue first, because that's an easy to add to protocol that if you, if you, it's not always easy to follow through, it's a hard, but it's easy to add to protocol that, you know, under board member expectations, that if you accept an invitation, that you attend or you find an alternate.
It's more than an invitation. It's, 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 it's a commitment to represent the board, and it can be a meeting, not an invitation, it's just.
Or at a meeting. So if you, if you have committed to represent the board, period.
Period.
Then if you are unable to do so, you will find someone else to do that.
And along with that, to tie into that, if you have to find somebody else to take your place, that we notify the proper person or organization, so that way when they're calling names, they're not calling names and nobody's standing, because everybody's like, where are they? You know, and it's, that is, yeah, that's right, it's embarrassing, because they are looking for that individual person.
Ms. Bishop?
Oh, and I think Susan did a really good job of keeping track of that for us. And I, I guess I want to ask a question. So if we find someone to represent the board in our place, it does not have to necessarily be another board member, it could be potentially a staff member.
Sure.
Because, you know, a lot of times, we're all committed somewhere on, you know, at certain times. So if I say, Kathleen, can you go here for me? And they're like, oh, I'm already somewhere else.
I hear what you're saying.
So.
Okay.
Yeah.
It makes sense. But it shouldn't be as a first, as a first, it shouldn't be as a first.
No.
It should be as a follow-up. Okay, got it. Thank you.
All right, so that's an easy add to protocol under board member expectations, and we got consensus around that.
Well, are we also adding reimbursing if we can't find somebody to?
Let's do that separately. Okay, so the expectation is if you agree to represent the board, you will be there or you will find someone to take your place. And we'll just put that under board member expectations under protocol. Okay, so now it's addressed that if you are unable to, and you are unable to find an alternate for something that has been purchased, should board members reimburse the district for that purchase? Any discussion?
What would the taxpayer say? I mean, they're, they're buying the ticket.
Yeah, I know something here.
Yes, please.
When we talked earlier about black and white protocols that are black and white and they are not to be broken no matter what, this is one of those areas that I might suggest would be a charcoal gray. Because life does happen.
I was gonna say.
Car accident on the way. An illness, that type of thing. So the protocol may need to, to at least give some flexibility there.
I agree.
So that, that you know. Because every effort, if this is what you agreed to, every effort should be made to follow the protocol.
So absent.
But life happens. Exactly.
With that, you tell it, do we have consensus? Thank you.
This is, I just want to clarify that that's when you have a ticket to an event that's in town, that's not like an airline ticket.
Correct.
I mean, right.
It's like.
Right.
Yeah, he, he went out to try and figure out.
Did you care where the turn-in was?
Oh, so he was, he was like, okay.
Yeah, he, he realizes it's not.
Okay. So the, yes, and that was the last thing that was on that slide was around the registration. So I'm gonna pop over to my computer so I know what was on the next slide. Excuse me. Grab that and we'll just pull it up right here. Thank you. Over to the next area. Okay, the next one was around the options for the school board meetings. And we had those three options of the workshop and briefing. So the first option was basically the status quo, where the, the agenda goes out on Tuesday. By Thursday, you, or actually by Wednesday, you provide questions so the board, so staff members have the opportunity to answer those. On Thursday, you have the workshop in the morning, the briefing in the afternoon, followed by the Tuesday board meeting. That was option one, which is status quo. Option two was the agenda comes out on Tuesday, you have until Thursday to get questions in. So that gives staff some time. And then on Monday, at 1:00 PM, we begin with the board workshop, followed by a board briefing. So that's option two. Option three would move that till Tuesday at 1:00 PM, would be the workshop, followed by the briefing, followed by the actual board meeting on Tuesday. So discussion around those three options.
Is that on what we were said?
Yes.
I read it.
Roll down.
And there was actually a whole separate paper that said.
Oh, this, it's on the separate paper.
It's, it's in PowerPoint as well, it's easier to read on a separate paper.
Okay, yeah.
Said board meeting options was the name of that file.
When I first got on the board, having everything on one day, it was seriously like drinking from the water. Because, and, and the thing that concerns me was that even the briefing part was something that we were not going to actually do anything with for at least another week or so in, in the future. And having all of it on one day, by the time you get to the evening, it's, it's exhausting. My suggestion, and I think you may have said this, but one of the suggestions is the agenda comes out on the Tuesday, we have until Thursday evening to get questions in. The staff has Friday and part of the big, like, Monday morning to get stuff back. We have the agenda review and whatever that Monday, and then have our action Monday.
So that was option two, would be, I don't know whether it's A, B, or one, two. Okay, so the second option. Any other discussion?
Well, I'm just curious, Dr. Atkins, where is, where is staff on this?
We, we talked about it at, actually, our cabinet. And I think that where, where we are is either, the preference is either B or C, which would be just having it during the same week. So rather, whether it's Monday or Tuesday, you know, it was, and I just kind of wanted to leave that to the, for the board's discretion. But at least the Monday gives staff a little bit more time to get responses turned around. And, and then also, it, it kind of puts everything a little bit closer together, you know, in terms of, you know, cause when board, board actions, I mean, when the board's there and, and, and every, it's, it's like, not that we're not always all in and all one, but it's, it's, it gets pretty intense.
Yeah.
So it puts it into a day or two-day timeframe, instead of spreading it over kind of Thursday, Friday, Sat, Monday, Tuesday.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm gonna be a total jerk and add a wrinkle and say, I, I like the combination of B and C, where we have the Monday workshops and Tuesday briefing actions. Because I really feel like that briefing before an action meeting is super important. Because we do have a lot of polls and we do have a lot of motions made the night of a meeting. And I feel like that, a good of the order at the end of the briefing will at least give us all an opportunity to know where each other stands on the potential issues that could sort of blow up at the action meeting that night. I just really feel like that, that briefing, that opportunity to meet before the action meeting is, is really important. So you're saying at the workshop, Monday afternoon, which would include a review of the agenda, and then a briefing Monday, a Tuesday afternoon?
Followed by the regular meeting.
Right. And then the other thing about the workshop is, I feel like we can get more work done if we don't have to worry about all of the brain drain that's going to occur by receiving information such. information, such deep information from staff during the briefing. Like, if I'm in a workshop and I know I'm getting four or five different very complicated subjects at the briefing, I'm really gonna be brain dead. But by the time we get to that action meeting on Tuesday night, we've discussed most stuff ad nauseam, that really is just conducting the business of the board. The workshop is where we really dive in deep and have those deep conversations. Um, that should be one day. And then I feel like the briefing and the action should be another day.
And I, I still go back to, the briefings though are topics that are future. And on the day of an action meeting, if we're focused on what we're going to do. And I, I have to say, and I'll, I'll ask the superintendent to weigh in on this, but since we've had the agenda reviews, there's been less of the polls and all of that because we've had the agenda review and the workshop to discuss all of that and get our questions answered. So, um, I don't know. I, having the briefing about, excuse me, about something that is, you know, days away just, I don't know, uh, makes it confusing to me. So that's why I'm thinking if we did them both on, I mean, I agree to have everything on the one week. Um, but Monday would be, you know, workshops and briefings and Tuesday would be our action week.
Well, I'm just, if you want to weigh in, I mean, I do think, I do agree that, I think once we got into the flow of the agenda review, uh, I think that that certainly helped a lot. I mean, uh, because I think, you know, we could look back and most of the polls, I believe, were, uh, not all the information, the board member didn't have all the information, or there was a missing piece somewhere, maybe something we didn't anticipate, or, or then a question maybe that they had gotten from a member of the public that hadn't been initially addressed in a previous briefing. So, um, so I do think it, I do think the agenda review has certainly helped. So, but again, with, as far as staff's concerned, I think that there are things that we've, at some point, we need to just do a briefing. Briefing is, is prob- is usually on a, a pretty major item. We're gonna provide a lot of information and those are out a ways from when the action is being taken. And then the agenda review is closer to when the actual action occurs, um, so that we can get those last questions a board member might have and make sure they have all the information they need to make a decision.
Ms. Fisher, did you have?
Yes. So, um, the agenda review, I think, has been extremely helpful and I really like that. I think that, um, by Thursday, staff has a bunch of stuff that's, I don't wanna say piled up, but on their plates. So I kind of like the suggestion of earlier in the week, a lot of us are coming in Monday to meet with the superintendent anyway. So I think that the workshop on Monday, um, where we could do the agenda review and then get into other discussions that we need to, would be good. And I, I would prefer to keep the briefing and the meeting on Tuesday. And one of the reasons is, and, and this is sort of a, I don't know, but it's a personal thing, but to, to be doing something else and to be, you know, living, I mean, a lot of us have other responsibilities too. And then to have to get in gear and get to the office at five o'clock for a six o'clock meeting when the day is almost over with and some of us start really early is like, but if I know I have to be there at one in the afternoon and stay till eight, I'm good with that. And, and it seems to flow. And the briefings sometimes include pre-briefings, which is just an introduction of information that they need to put out there before they proceed with, um, with their actions and, and give us an opportunity to ask questions and make suggestions. So I, uh, although that wasn't one of the options, I, I like the combination of B and C.
Well, so, well, the briefings would only be when needed. So it would not be every single Tuesday then?
Right.
Right. So, okay.
Well, it wouldn't be every Tuesday anyway.
Correct. So that would be, I mean, every one.
Can I, I'd like, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. The only thing I don't like about the Monday review is that, um, lots of times more information is, is needed. And, and I think what, what I hear, hear sometimes, and I've heard it before, is that just because we discuss something at a workshop and all the questions have been answered, that certainly doesn't equal, it, it lessens probably the number of polls, but it doesn't equal no polls. Because it could well be that we hear the answers and we don't care for the answers and don't support the answers. And I think there's more of a possibility, um, to have those unanswered questions, maybe to change the board member's mind or not, um, when we have more time. I mean, I can live with this, with this Monday. What I don't like is that if we, you know, let's say we go back to having a briefing right before the action meeting, what, what I don't like is the idea that, well, hey, we have one more chance doing board member comment to ask questions on the, that's not the purpose. I, I think that we need to pretty much stick to questions pertaining to that briefing. I mean, why have the action meeting? Why have discussions at the action meeting if we're gonna bring a bunch of questions for that night to our afternoon? So that's my opinion on it.
Can I throw one more thing in there? I know most of us will be with you on Monday.
Yeah, so just about all right now. It's like, it is six.
So we would have to adjust that.
Well, this, the Monday workshop would be in lieu of those one-on-ones that week that we, that we-
Yeah, I mean, right.
Because I, the reason I brought it up is that sometimes in the discussion with the superintendent, I also need the answers to things that, that help me to have a better idea, uh, for the action meeting and I vote him. So he can many times and has answered things and I go, okay, I get this one. So then I'm fine with it. I, 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 I would be a little leery of foregoing our one-on-ones with him that could answer questions as well.
So that leads me to think a little bit more. I like, we get our Friday updates and usually from that I have questions that I get answers on Monday. So I tend to think that that's really been beneficial via weekly updates and then the meeting on Monday as well. However, I, I like that extra day also, instead of doing Thursdays, going to Monday, trying Monday.
Mm-hmm.
At, you know, maybe we could try it for a little bit and see how that goes, um, in, in the process. Because I'm open to try. I like having it prior to, Tuesday seems to be a cram day or something, I don't know. I just feel like, and then by the, when we were there all day long and by the time the meeting came around, I, you're done. You're just done. And it hadn't even started. The real part, the real, you know, the real important thing. So, yeah. That's my thought.
How, how could we reschedule our meetings with you?
To Fridays, possibly?
Yeah.
Well, and I think the thing is that everybody was concerned about coming every week, coming into the office, was the issue that I heard. Am I correct?
I'm happy to forego, I'm happy to meet every other week with the superintendent. So that's not an issue for me.
Yeah.
So you're gonna get those questions on Thursday. Is staff, are you gonna provide us with the answers to the agenda questions in our board update on Friday?
That's hard.
Because I think that, is that, is that possible?
It, it depends on the nature of the questions. Because a lot of times I get those responses and I usually have a little bit more of an idea of what the board member might be looking for. So I, I push back and, and maybe ask for additional clarif- additional information or I clear, have to clarify. That happens a lot, you know, where I get back something that, no, that's not really what the board member's looking for. You know, here's this clarification. So, um, sometimes they're pretty straightforward and they can go right into the board update. You know, a great response, boom, it's in the update. Other times it requires a little bit more nuance or, uh, it's something that I need Doc Pruitt to come up in front of the board and address it in the agenda review. If that makes sense. Because you, you can convey so much more information, you know, if you, if they're standing there in front of you, um, talking about the issue and you can even ask additional questions.
Is, sorry, that kind of brings up a response to-
It really just kind of prepares them that they're gonna be coming up in front of the board and providing a response. So a lot of them are very complicated and do, you know, I do want them to get up there and answer them, but I mean, they're just putting it in the board update. But if it's a simple, straightforward one, yeah, board update's easy.
Well, it brings, I'm sorry. So, um, Dr. Atkins, uh, as far as staff is concerned, is that easier for them to just be able to get up there and give their answer and then get feedback from us?
In most cases, yeah.
And, and so would that, um, A, give them more time and B, less cumbersome for them when, when regarding some of their other responsibilities and duties? Because I feel like they're taking a lot of staff time. You know, people need to be mindful and consider that also.
I think that, like we were talking this morning, the gray area, when we, excuse me, I just looked it up. Um, initially when we started the agenda review, part of it was that by a certain time we would have questions in. And that works, but there needs to be a gray area to it. Because I think like what you were saying, is staff getting up and being able to explain. And then it brings questions from other people and it becomes a discussion more than a hard fast, you know, by 12 o'clock you have to have all your questions in. And I, I really think we should expand that a little gray area because most of the, the questions, I don't know, they have lessened. In the very beginning, we, everybody had a lot of questions. It's gone down. And if you have it to have turn in by Thursday at five o'clock, then fine. Otherwise, when we're in the discussion, that's what it's about. Because you may ask a question that I didn't think about. And if Dr. Pruitt is standing up there, I can say, oh, yeah, this is whatever. And it, it creates that gray area that allows us to, to communicate and discuss.
We all benefit from it.
That's, yeah, that's gonna make that good.
Yeah.
I think just what's important, you know, for us, it's if we have, um, we get the, the questions from the board members in by that dead, that date, then it gives us a, a good idea about where, where are the areas that we really need a little bit more additional information to get the board member the information they need to make a decision. That's, that's been helpful. And usually that deadline for me helps us to make sure that we're prepared as a team for whatever we do, provide that to the board. We do expect that as when a person does step up to the plate, so to speak, um, you know, provides information, there's gonna be, you know, there's gonna be other things that come up. But hopefully, like I said, they're ready to answer those questions.
Okay, I'd like to split the, um, the discussion for just a minute and let's take the workshop first, because I'm hearing a lot of agreement around the workshop on Monday. So let's see if we have consensus around having the workshop on Monday.
Monday afternoon.
Monday afternoon, Monday afternoon.
Okay.
So this would be, instead of having a Thursday workshop, the night in the morning, you'd have a, the Monday prior to the Tuesday action meeting would be a workshop.
Yes.
Beginning of the month.
So we have consensus that the workshop will be on Monday. Okay, yes, ma'am.
Okay, but Betsy, why don't, why aren't you there? You were a this way. I didn't get that from you.
I, I would like an extra day to-
So you like Thursdays? Is that what you're saying?
Here I even say Friday, but then not, not-
No, dear.
I might shoot you.
No, no, I'm really sticking to that.
I might shoot you on Friday.
No, I can, I'm, I'm fine. I can, if I were not fine, I'd go, eh.
Be careful.
No, I'm, I'm, I can, I can live with it. I kind of like that extra day because I'm a processor and, and, you know, that sort of thing. But no, Monday afternoon's fine. Because we'll still have the Friday afternoon updates, right? That in part answer perhaps the simpler questions.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. You still have, we're not gonna get, eliminate Friday. And that, I think, is beneficial for, we could still do, we could still ask the questions even, you could go Mon- on Monday before one o'clock. Yeah, if you really wanted to.
We can call up as soon as the, go, hey, we can call up as soon as the new board docs come out in there. What is?
He has his number.
See, this is where we need, we need to, gotta get, gotta get the pictures and then just get that picture, that face.
Put that on the next slide.
So, so we have consensus that we will move the, the workshop will be Monday morning, or Monday afternoon at 1:00 PM. So now let's go to the briefing. I heard a little bit of both on the briefing, some saying yes, Monday after the workshop. Uh, and some, some of the talk around that was that sometimes we run late, sometimes it's confusing to get, um, two different sets of information on the same day, one around the workshop and one around things coming in the future. Then I heard some discussion around possibly Tuesday, right before the action meeting. And the positives with that were that you didn't feel like you had to stop your workshop and that the information was consistent. But then the negative was that it's something you're not gonna be voting on that night. Any further discussion on those? Okay, let's start with Monday. Consensus around having the briefing following the workshop on Monday. Okay, I see lots of thumbs down, so that is definitely not consensus. So let's move to Tuesday. Workshop Tuesday at 1:00 PM, prior to the action meeting at six.
Briefing.
I'm sorry, briefing. Briefing, thank you. Briefing Tuesday prior to the workshop. All right. We have consensus.
Yeah, I care.
Upon to the action. I know, I can't, we need a press.
Right, I just want to make, clarify the one-on-one meetings.
Yes. Okay. So let me first clarify briefing, because I've said the wrong word three times now. So on Tuesday, there is a briefing, 1:00 PM, prior to the action meeting. And you all, consensus, I just want to make sure that she has that in it.
Is it one?
Well, we had said one o'clock, but that was actually not a, that was-
But wait, so-
Well, do we need it one to a five?
Is it, that's not set in stone because we may not have a briefing. That's, that's as needed.
If there's a briefing that is needed prior to the action workshop, I mean, prior to the action meeting. So is there discussion around the timing?
Say that again.
If there's, if there is not a briefing required, then there wouldn't be one. But if there is a briefing, it'd be before the action meeting on Tuesday. You know, is there discussion around time? Because I heard someone say, does it have to be one?
We're good.
Well, can we, can we say, I'm sorry, can we say depending on what the briefing, if we got a lot of stuff, which Jen's not gonna do, um, we have a lot of things, we start at one and if not, we, you know.
Yeah.
No, I know, I know.
The only, the only concern that I hear from board members is, is if we have a, a very short briefing and then there's a large gap of time between the briefing and the, and the six o'clock meeting, so.
And I just said to Mrs. Jordan that if we were doing our job, the way we should be doing our job, we would have briefings from one until five. Because we're not getting enough information. We're not-
Been asking questions.
We're not doing what we need to be doing. We haven't got in that rhythm. So I, my preference would be to start at one o'clock. And if it turns out that we are not filling that time with meaningful work, then we bump it back to two or whatever.
Okay, so I'm hearing a suggestion, we do one o'clock. Consensus? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm just gonna maybe have, throw out one more thought, that you say no earlier than one o'clock, so that everybody knows this is the block of time you're going to allow.
Okay, that's good.
But it may start at two o'clock. You know, but, but everybody knows from one o'clock on, you are available to be at those meetings. You advertise it based on what the agenda is going to be for the briefing. Because you don't advertise flat out, forever and ever, we're gonna have these at one o'clock. You advertise based on what the agenda would be. And that would be something that the superintendent and the chairman would talk about, how much time do you think we're gonna need? Then add another half hour. Then add another half hour, and, and then you advertise that.
I have a question, back, and I'm sorry to do this, but back on the Monday workshop and agenda review, that's all we would be doing that time at 1 o'clock?
Workshop and agenda review. So, workshops...
Okay, workshop, and then the next day's briefing, okay. I just want to make sure.
Right.
I don't want us just to have the hour, and then that's, okay, that's, okay.
Does that keep running 45 minutes or...
That has, but then we've also been doing workshops that have at least an additional hour.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I'm happy with the 1 o'clock briefing. That said, I remember when we were doing it that way, sometimes we would end, like, 20 minutes before the action meeting started. And when you're in there, sitting on the dais, you, you need a break.
Yes.
I'm the kind of person, I get really cranky if I don't eat. I need to eat. I, yes, I mean, I think most of us want at least a break, something to eat, but, so, if we can kind of agree to be a little more respectful of, of time, because I'd rather have a longer time, I, I don't want, like, three hours in between. But if we have, like, an hour and a half, and we have time to eat, and do the emails or do something, you know.
Well, to Quinn's, to Quinn's credit, I think that the workshop, agenda review thing helped briefings get, we got better control of briefings as a result of that.
Better control in terms of timing.
Exactly.
At the end, yeah. I mean, we, that's, that's my only concern, that we don't have any kind of a break, I don't know, neither one, so makes a little bit of a break.
Starting at 1 is more likely to give you that time, it's a, that's what you're saying.
That's why I would stick with it in the 1.
1 o'clock, okay.
Keeping in mind what Kathleen said too, that we need to delve into something deeper, not to be driven by...
By that time, yes. All right, so I'm hearing most talk around, let's set it at 1, and then if you need to later, go back and reassess, is that correct?
No, earlier than 1.
Yeah, no earlier than 1. See thumbs? No earlier than 1.
Boy, we're ready to sing Kumbaya.
And we are ready for a break. So, we have 15-minute break, we're actually ahead of schedule, so that's a good thing. Oh, I'm so sorry, we do need to address the one-on-one meeting, so if you'll think about that during your break, we'll come back and do that first thing. Ms. Fisher, are you okay with that? Consensus around the proposed schedule? Yes?
Susan said it's...
All right, thank you. The newsletter, did you want to talk about that?
Also attached was the schedule that I developed for the monthly message for board members.
I missed that.
Looks like this.
But where was it?
How late?
It was somewhere, because I started, but I don't know where I counted.
I see the board meeting options and the board action meetings.
Committee liaisons, it's the third tab under committee liaison.
Oh, we see it.
Board action meetings. Third tab under committee liaison, number five.
Okay.
And I just tried to pick up wherever you're leaving off, and give everybody a chance, and then it goes on.
Happy to hear.
Newsletter.
Does anyone need more time to look at that? Any questions about it?
I just know.
That's good.
Can you just snap down, I want you to give me a second to take a look there. Okay, we have agreement on the newsletter rotating schedule? The monthly message? Okay, awesome. We've already talked about liaisons, so I'm going to skip that piece. All right, in the past couple of years, the board has talked about either board goals or board priorities. And in talking to the chair and to the superintendent, we said, board members have, have taken on championing a specific area in the strategic plan, and our suggestion is that those be considered the board priorities this, this year. Any discussion around that?
Dr. Atkins, your five priorities, are they, are they, I can't...
Do they mesh with you?
Yes, yes, they do.
They are not one here, but yes, they definitely are in alignment.
Okay, so we haven't missed anything that is one of your priorities this year? Okay. Then I'm fine.
Consensus around using these as your board priorities? Okay, all right. All right, I, I asked Carol... Carol's going to come up to lead the discussion around chair and vice chair. Oh, you just got to kick me, I'm so sorry. Okay, I skipped his one-on-ones like three times, so I think we could, we're not going to act, and it's not a workday. I rarely have to sit in one, though, so.
Back and change.
Okay, would you like to talk about your one-on-ones, Dr. Atkins?
Well, yeah, I just wanted to, because we did the Monday schedule, you know, what, how we have them scheduled now is, like, we, we have all seven board members on Monday. Yeah, I mean, some of them in the afternoon, some of them in the morning now, actually. So, if you have a Monday workshop, then those that are in the afternoon, you know, so the question would be, if you want to have them every week, you know, then you would have to schedule them, whoever's in the afternoon would have to be at an alternate time. And then the second question is, do you need them every other, every other week or every week? And that's up to you, whatever your blunder is, I'm, I'm fine, we'll adjust. But, but because some of them are in Monday afternoon, we have to...
This is fine.
So, we're doing the Monday workshops basically every other, twice a month.
Right.
Why not the Mondays that we don't have the workshop, we have the one-on-ones?
Right. Any other discussion?
I mean, if I need you for something, I can always get you for five minutes on the phone. I mean, I don't abuse that, I don't make it frequent, but if something comes up, I'll call Alexa, and she'll make the time in your schedule, so.
Okay, consensus around no one-on-ones on the Mondays that you have workshops, so you'd be having one-on-ones every other week. And then if you wanted to, pardon?
I mean, it can be your choice.
If you had, if you wanted to set up a different time with him, absolutely, that would be very... Consensus? All right, thank you. And now, chair and vice chair, is that...
Okay. Can we just back up to the committee's shortlist for a minute? Are we staying the same on all of our committee committees altogether?
Until June.
Until June.
Okay.
Thank you.
All righty. So, I am a firm believer that you need to pick the right person at the right time. And so, I think one of the things that I would like to start the discussion with is, what are you looking for in a chairman to lead you through next year? From November to November. What are you looking for?
Focus.
Focus, someone who's focused? As a chairperson, what would you say? I think so-and-so would be good, because, in your head, why would you either volunteer to do it or think someone else would? What kind of qualities?
I think it's got to be somebody that everybody at this table trusts and respects.
Okay.
And I don't think that can be said about everybody at this table today.
Okay. Somebody you trust and respect. What else? Somebody who can keep you all focused, or keep any group focused, actually, is important with the chairman, yes?
A neutral person, an even keel person.
An even keel, all right. Anything else?
Yeah, I think, you know, we've had a lot of dissension, so I think somebody like me wouldn't work very well, because, no, seriously.
Because you've been in the middle of some of it.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think it needs to be somebody a little more objective, and not somebody who tends to, I think, a better way than raise the hackles of others, but ruffles feathers is nicer.
That's lovely.
And I think that's where you're talking about neutral person.
Exactly.
You know, same, kind of the same thing.
Yeah.
Someone who can maintain a, in that role, that does not preclude them from sharing their opinions, or to, to talk, but as chairman, they're, they're neutral, willing to listen to everybody, give everybody a fair shake. That's, that whole, okay?
Anything else? Okay, neutral, someone who can keep a board focused and moving forward, somebody you can trust, and somebody you can respect, did we get it all?
I think, I believe that we should have, just as we asked the superintendent to have a succession plan, I believe that's what we need to have on the board too. You know, have people prepare to move up to that next level.
Okay. Anything else? Because that could be another discussion afterward, you know, definitely, definitely worth discussing. All right, so, my understanding is, when you come together, you actually talk about who might be interested and who would want to take that position. I'm not going to be asking for consensus, I'm not going to be asking for you to make a commitment, I'm asking for people that are interested, or if you would like to, at this point, ask someone if they're interested, we'll have that come up, and we'll have the discussion about that in relationship to those things we've just committed, and that you have said are important to you as a group. Then, you have the opportunity to noodle it, think about it, and at the organization meeting, that's when you'll decide who you nominate and for whom you vote. Okay? Okay, go ahead.
I would like to nominate Mary Fisher, because of her, the things that we said, the even keel, her experience, her ability to listen and to understand, meaning, I just, I think that, especially with all the mental health, you know, that's what I meant.
That wasn't part of the criteria, but, yeah.
Really, not her mental health, y'all's mental health. There you go. Okay, so you would like, just for everybody to consider Mary. Mary, are you even interested? Before you all start considering it, are you interested at all, or willing? Let's put it willing, are you willing?
Yes, I am willing and interested in doing whatever I can to help this team move forward.
Okay, all right. Kathleen?
I would like to see Betsy do it. I'm not, excuse me, not Betsy, Debbie.
Debbie, okay.
The reason is...
Good. There was a shockwave, though, anyway, my mind, I don't know about the dress, Kathy. And it went through my body. Okay, did y'all get a picture of my face?
Hey, 20 bucks after this.
Put it on a loop, rewind, rewind.
Oh, my. Okay, so, so you'd like people to consider...
I would like people to consider Debbie, because amidst all of the stuff that has gone on this board, she is the one person that people feel comfortable with. And I'm going to have to say this about Mary, there's still an absence, absence of trust, given what happened in January for me. And so, that's, that's an issue for me, and I, I just need to put it out there, okay? That's when we had the superintendent mess, and the role he played. So, that continues, that is a concern, it's never been addressed, and, and I just feel like, Betsy, Debbie, worse.
Insert here.
She, she...
That one.
That works, has worked really hard and really diligently to understand what her job is, and to be prepared, and she is the one person that can make everybody laugh, and I don't think there's anybody who has a dresser with her. And so, I think that from, I just think, given what we've come through, and given that she is a newbie, I would like to see Betsy considered, Debbie.
I am just...
That's a hat trick.
All right, Betsy? Are you interested? Debbie, 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 Debbie. All right, are you at all, that's one, just an error, are you willing or interested?
I don't know, because I wasn't even thinking about that, so I, I don't even know, I feel about that, okay?
Okay.
I mean, I'm still learning, you know, and I would want to be the best that I could be. So, yeah, I guess I...
I just saw that deep, right?
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else?
Betsy?
You can tell it's good.
It's good, no.
Okay. Any other people that are interested or willing to be considered? Okay, so, now, as a board, what kinds of conversations do you need to have? We've had a couple of people share, and what other kinds of information, either questions to ask, things to consider, even bringing up things that we need to consider as a group without naming anybody, that I think we need to make sure that we're doing blah, 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 blah. And, and right now would be the time to have that conversation, and give people as much to think about and as much information as they go through the next, was it two weeks? Is it next week?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, okay. You're doing that, oh, we're doing the twelve, okay. So, and we're going to nominate Betsy. I'm sorry, I just had to do that. Don't throw me in the briar path. Okay, so, is there anything else that, that you need to discuss in, in regard to that? And so, you've got, you have a few things, and I'd like to see you write these down, the ones that you committed to, someone you can trust, someone that's focused, someone that's neutral. What did you say, Kathleen? You said trust and...
Respect.
Respect. And however you're going to go about your decision-making, keep those things in mind. Anything else that needs to be brought up?
I think on that respect, it needs to go both ways. That, you know, I agree, someone that we respect and someone that respects.
Each of you, okay? All right.
Can I just, I'm, I sit with a lot of boards, and, and every board has a chair, and one of the things that the chair has to do is keep the meeting moving along, and prevent it from, prevent things from getting brought down into the weeds, and do it in an entirely respectful and polite way, which means politely cutting off people who are talking too long. And you have under your parliamentary procedure, it says, each person can speak for 10 minutes and then five minutes after, but if you did that, then your meetings would be 40 hours if everybody spoke on every item. And so, there's an art that, and anybody here can do it, I just want to remind everybody that there is an art to gently and politely cutting off your colleagues, or getting them to focus, or keeping the thing in order, and while the attorney sits and serves as the parliamentarian, ideally, that's something where people turn to the parliamentarian for a ruling on a point of order, and not have, you know, but the chair is sort of the main person who's conducting, who's conducting the meeting, and making sure that you, you know, that it's, that, that things are done by motion and second, and, you know, and there's something else, for example, a lot of times... And there's something else, for example, a lot of times items come up for discussion and that's fine. Formally, some, you know, in a very formal atmosphere, you move an item to the floor for discussion. We don't have to do that. But if it looks like an item doesn't have any support at all and only one person supports it, it is appropriate sometimes to ask for a motion and a second, and if there's no second, you can just drop the item. Which is one of the, one of the ways, but it's a, there's a sensitivity to doing that, that the chair, that the best meetings come when the chair is focused on those things. I just thought I'd bring that up, because that's really the primary role of the chair. The chair's just one vote, I did six, but the chair has the gavel, which means that she's making sure that things are moving.
Right, right. So somebody with that ability. Now, I will also say that whoever ends up chairman and vice chairman, there is a training, all day training for them so that they can learn some of the nuances of the position. And we also work with parliamentary procedure, kind of Bob's rules. Because Robert's rules for a large organization is very different than what you do with Robert's rules in a small group, so.
You don't need it for only seven feet.
Yeah, we talked about the small
When you're over twenty-five, then you need four.
Absolutely.
And that's, I have a question to Mitch and then maybe to the people who are considering further nominations or those that have already been, well, not really nominated, but suggest, suggested. We really have a couple schools of thought on how the meetings, you know, if you compare the chair and the vice chair on the way things, things are done. And is it typical for an organization our size to go one, one, one straight down the road to ask if you have a comment? And then if somebody has spoken once, they can't speak again till every, I mean, where are the hard, fast, you know, we talked earlier about shades of gray. What are the hard, fast rules that we want to enforce? Enforce versus Bob's rules? What, in your experience?
In my experience, in every board that I sit with, they do allow everybody to comment a first time before anybody goes back for seconds. And if, if that is bent sometimes when the chair allows a little bit of back and forth just because it's important to have the discussion. So for example, you've spoken, you've made a point, someone else responds to your point, so just wait a second, I think you're missing my point, the chair might allow you to break in and clarify your point. But you don't, you don't speak again on your point until everybody's had an opportunity to comment. That's in almost every board that I've ever been with that's chaired well.
And it doesn't mean everyone has to comment. It's everyone who wants to comment has had the opportunity.
Normally, can I still, continue that? Is it normally just as people are wanting to make a comment? Or is it normally first person, second person, third person?
In order of how you raised your hand.
But if
That's an agreement that you make as a group as to whether or not you want to go, all right, from seat one to seat two, three, seat four. If that's the way you want to conduct it, you can follow it that way. That's not Robert's rules, that's not hard and fast. Hard and fast with Robert's rules is motion, second, vote. That's the hard and fast.
Okay, because my issue with going down the line and with what the board chairman has, the board chair has the prerogative to call on whomever in whatever order. And often that can be manipulated, that can be manipulated to put someone earlier than someone who might have an opposing viewpoint that's more in line with the chair's idea. Do you understand what I'm saying? Is everybody following me? That really gives, and that's why to have somebody who is unbiased and willing to listen is so important to me. And it's also important to me to have somebody who is not so bound up with the black and white that they can't see that there should be using your professional judgment some times where maybe a comment is made and it's totally off base, didn't hear anything that the original person said. But we all need to keep in mind, think about that, that that's a huge power of the chairperson to be able to select the order that people go. Because if you put somebody who might not have a viewpoint that goes with your own first, then that person may not have an opportunity as a rebuttal or as a further explanation.
Typically, the chair should recognize people in the order in which they have asked to be recognized. But sometimes that means the order in which she sees them, because if she's looking this way and somebody overhears raising her hand and she doesn't have great peripheral vision, she may not see it. Some daisies have buttons that you push and then the order comes up, gets lit up. I don't think we have that, but that's something that probably isn't a huge expense to have if that becomes something that's important. But I think that the comments that were made earlier about the chair's neutrality in choosing somebody who everyone considers to be neutral, you know, that might enter into your concern, your discussion as you express those concerns that you, you know, are concerned that a chair that's not neutral can manipulate the other comment.
We can. Thank you. Any other comments before we move on to vice chair? And then we'll also talk about, after that, the succession plan that you're talking about and see if there's people land on that one. Okay, so is, is this part wrapped up? So we have two people that have been brought forward for your consideration. But no one has been nominated. Okay, that happens at the meeting. Okay, all right. Now, actually, let's talk about the succession plan first. Because a succession plan may include a vice chairman moving into that position, may not, I don't know. And if it does, then they would want to take that into consideration with the vice chairman conversation. Okay? Okay, so make your case.
Okay, well, the reason I had brought that up because being with the Florida Restaurant and Lodging Association, that is how we set up our board, you know, and of course, we had a hundred people, but we had the chair, the vice chair, secretary, treasurer, and that's how we, in ranking, that's how it works. So the chair was the chair, the vice chair was preparing to take that role over, you know, the following year. And then the secretary, everyone was, it's like cross-trained. Everyone was cross-trained to start moving up to that position. And as people were voted in, they were voted in at the, of course, the lower level and they worked their ways up as well, learning all the, everything about the association or our needs, our wants. And anybody was ready to fall into that spot if you had to have that person there. Everybody was prepared.
And you think there's a need for that here, why?
I just think that, I don't know, maybe because I'm just so used to always having it that way. And I just think it's not a, it's not a bad thing, because you're working together, you should be working together. The chair and the vice chair should always be working together, you know, for the better part of the organization.
Okay. Any comments? Okay.
My concern is sunshine law, because I had asked that question, in fact, I had posed it to Andrea and some other board members before. If we didn't have sunshine law, yes, that would be good, because we could work in tandem. We could have worked more in tandem, but because of sunshine law, we can't do that. And also, I feel that, as other board members have said, you know, the position of the chair is basically just to, the only thing that's different is the responsibility of chairing meetings and doing those types of things. But as far as any other, you know, above anybody, there's no such thing as that. We're anyway, and everyone learns as we're going along, and I just feel everyone should have an opportunity.
Yeah, where committee, the community, your staff may put a whole lot more credence on, this is the chairman of the board, that's not the case. You are the facilitator of the meetings. You are an equal board member. Yes.
No, and I totally agree with you there. And I understand that, that we are all the same. By no means do I believe that anybody's above anybody else. But I was just, to me, that has always just, has been instilled in me, that's why I made that suggestion.
And we're still, may not be a bad one. You know, if the group wants to do it that way, then that could be the case.
Yeah, I have been in a lot of organizations that do it that, that way. However, I don't think it's a real good analogy in this case, because of the fact that we're elected officials. And also that every other year, there's the possibility that the whole chemistry of the board is going to change. It's not like being in a, in an organization, professional organization where you leave because you retire or you leave because, oh, I'm tired of doing this. It's, and it may change the whole tenor. So I'm thinking that somebody that we may think, let's say we had that plan and we may think this person would be good as a chair, needs a training year. I'm thinking the possibility of so many things from year to year changing the whole political climate that how we feel one year may not follow through the second year. That's what I would
Okay, Melissa?
Um, Melissa. Actually, Gwen, you mentioned sometime at another, one of our workshops or something about giving opportunity for each person to have
That was one thing I did agree on, yeah.
Have a chance or, but And then I was thinking about it, there was a time, was it a year, a year before or so, where everybody had a chance? Was that just for the
It was for student weddings and termination.
Thank you, yeah.
What my suggestion was, is that we have two, you know, meetings per month, meeting sessions. And that whoever is vice chair at the time would do one and the second one would rotate, which kind of lends itself to what you're saying, preparing someone, that on that second meeting, that we would have an actual list of rotation, that everyone would get an opportunity during that year to chair meeting, to chair briefing meeting. And that, that would kind of prepare people to be ready for the responsibility if they chose to do it in the future. So, and I didn't bring that up earlier, so I don't know.
It could be, it could be a thought as, as we're going through, and if that's something we want to do, we can, we can talk about that specifically. Anything else with this suggestion?
Well, I'm going to take my suggestion back, because I, very good. After you say what you said, that makes sense.
Well, and what I was going to add to it, just for future consideration, is you had three brand new board members this time. Next year, you may have some new board members and you're committing them to having to choose or having to say, that's who the last board picked as your chairman. All right, we had that discussion this morning. So you pulled it out, so we won't talk about that anymore. So let's go on to the vice chairman. We'll go down to the discussion for vice chair and then we'll come back to that suggestion. Okay? What about vice chair? Are you looking for the same qualities? Are you looking for somebody who's going to just be the cheerleader or somebody there that's going to support the chairperson? What are you going to do? What are you looking for? In a vice chair? What qualities, what are you looking for?
Somebody who wants to support the team and who is interested in facilitating meetings.
Yeah, I think the difference between the chair and the vice chair is that the vice chair has to facilitate meetings that involve staff. And the chair is facilitating meetings that involve the board. Okay? And I think that more can be done with respect to helping staff understand what it is we need to hear from them in order to do our job better. And so I think that having the right person in the vice chair role who can perhaps facilitate that a little bit with the superintendent and whoever's doing presentations is, is a thought.
Okay, so there's a little bit different skill set with the vice chair than there is for the chairman. One is working with the board, facilitating the meetings, working with the community that comes to your meetings and that type of thing. The other is working with staff as well and, you know, knowing how to facilitate a meeting, know how to move things forward, but also work with staff. Anything else? Trustworthy, honest, girl scout?
I think we need all of those, everything that was discussed earlier and keeping everything on track and time.
The hope is that you all get to the point where that's just a given, because all of you are trustworthy, all of you are focused, all of you are respectful. You've worked on that, you've said you have, and I have seen great progress in that respect. And that would be the goal for everybody, but right now specifically, that's what you're looking for in a vice chair. Any other comments? Okay, is there anyone interested or anyone that you would like to suggest for consideration? You're going to need a vice chair.
But no one's ever said I'm interested in the
Okay, all right. Gwen is interested? Anyone else? You have two people that were suggested for chairman. Would you, are you also interested in considering a different one for? How do I put that, not a different one? But if one person becomes chair, are you, is the other person still eligible? Maybe that's a word, for consideration for vice chair.
Well, I'm going to ask Debbie if she would be interested in doing vice chair.
Yeah, well, I'd like to consider both.
Chairman or vice chair, okay? All right, good. Yes?
Which do we go down first?
The chair.
The chair and then the
Okay, I just didn't
All right, is there anything else you want to bring up? Talk about for consideration? Yes.
I just will mention that, oh, gosh, a number of years ago, this conversation did take place.
And I was here.
And the people who were nominated at the table were not the people who were discussed here.
Oh, okay.
So I just want people to understand that the fact that names have been brought forward doesn't
Yeah, yes, yes.
It's non-binding.
Exactly, yeah. At any time, anyone can nominate someone for the position and then you make a decision. But the caveat will be, I'm hoping you will still make the decision based on the criteria that you all mentioned and agreed to. Okay? So Betsy's willing to be considered for chairman or vice chair?
Debbie.
I did not do that on purpose, I swear, I did not do that on purpose.
Stop, Betsy.
Betsy, you just smile a little bit.
Betsy, here.
Okay, so Debbie. I really did not do that on purpose, I swear to you.
Where's Freud when you need it?
You said it with a straight face, I'm not kidding you.
I know, I was not, I swear. Normally, and I'm not above that, I'll tell you that, but I did not do that this time on purpose. Debbie is, will consider chairman or vice chair? Gwen would like to be considered for vice chair? Mary, chairman? Chairman, vice chair, or just chairman?
Either.
Either, okay? Chairman or vice chair? Mary. The rest of you, look at what the criteria is, think about it, and then, good luck on the nineteenth. And then you'll bring it forward. I will say the same thing that I said the last time that I was here and having this organization meeting. How you choose is important. The person you choose is not as important as how you move forward afterward. So my hope would be that once you make your decision, that you all rally behind the chairman and help that person be successful. And once the vice chair, that you rally around the vice chair and help that person successful, because it's important that you're all successful. Okay, now, let's go back to the idea that Gwen threw out as far as the vice chairman doing one, is it briefing sessions?
Briefing.
Briefing session, okay. One briefing session per month, and then you rotate. So, the first one might be done by the vice chairman, the second one would be done by a board member. The next month, the first one by the vice chair, the second one would be by a different board member facilitating that meeting. And so on and so on.
And, and I would add, it would be the individual's decision if they wanted to, to be in that rotation.
Okay.
And if they've not been-
So, nobody would be forced into it? If they chose not to do it, that would be fine too?
Whoever is interested in doing it.
Okay, thoughts?
Would the chair be, be in the rotation or not in the rotation?
No.
Just the briefing.
Okay, so I'm seeing notes, and I, everybody's kind of shaking their head, so the chairman would not be in that rotation.
So, it would be the other five?
So, it would be the other five.
I believe there's something that they have to sign, though, as a vice chair.
Yeah, it's still, they're electing a vice chair.
They still have a vice chair to do the sign.
This is just to rotate.
It does, but vice chairman, it boils down to, does the vice chairman facilitate all of the briefing sessions? Or do they facilitate one a month and make arrangements for a, a second person to do?
Then, what I would say is, when you're nominating a vice chair, and then you're taking that away from them, their position of what they're supposed to be doing for the board, I, I can't see doing that.
Okay.
That's my personal opinion.
I, I agree with that, I think it's-
With her? Okay, so we have a couple of people.
Oh, my gosh.
You know, 'cause you did throw the other, I know she's never gonna hear the end of this one. So, um, you did add that extra caveat for the vice chair, being able to work with staff. And I think that's what both of you are saying. Okay? Any other thoughts? Okay, that is something, we can decide whether we're gonna reach consensus or not. So, if you think that this is a good idea, that you want to move forward, that you have the vice chairman do the first meeting and a different board member facilitate the second meeting each month, let me know. Okay, so I am seeing, okay, that's mixed. All right, let's, if you, if you would prefer to have the vice chair continue the briefing sessions for everyone, would that be your consensus? Let me know. Okay, we have-
It's still split.
We have, still split, okay? So, what do you want to do? We're not voting, it's not majority rule.
How many do we have downs for that? Two?
Two.
So, you have more in favor or almost in favor?
Yeah, there was no downs, it was split.
Were they halfway, ah, so I'm hanging down? Were they, you'll live with that? Okay, if, if you think the vice chair should facilitate all of the briefing sessions, thumb up. If you don't care one way or the other, make it sideways, and make it really, really down if you're opposed to it. Okay, so we have two opposed, two don't care, and three that are good with it. Okay, so, we will continue on, and you can have some conversation about it at another time. Is there anything else that you need to take care of before you're voting for your chairman and vice chair? Any other comments? Kathy?
No, I'm just ready to move on to the next.
Okay, and I am too. All right, let's go to the next.
This is mine.
This is mine as well. Oh, y'all are almost done.
Two things, two things, two things.
All right, um, when you were all together, you po- you chose as your trust agreements that you wanted to move forward, you chose demonstrate respect, clarify expectations, and listen, listen first. You said you're doing pretty well on the demonstrate respect, so we're gonna keep working on that, but it's not gonna be a main focus. You also said you're doing much better listening to each other, and I have to agree with both of those. Not that you care, but I'm telling you, I've seen it. So, we're gonna move that to a category where you continue to do that, but you wanted to continue clarifying expectations. Are there any others of these trust agreements that you want to work on or that you believe will help you grow and be a better board?
Can you describe a little more of extend trust?
Extend trust is, um, I am willing to trust you until I find out I shouldn't, as opposed to prove to me that I should trust you. It's a different, it's, it's what am I going to do to move it forward? Because trust has been a co- a conversation. So, are you willing to say, all right, I'm, I'm going to trust that we're all moving in the same direction, we're all doing the right thing, we're all focused even though we may have a different way of getting there, at least there are no hidden agendas, there's no undermining, there's no deception, whatever. I'm gonna trust that until you prove it different. Any other? Okay? Which ones do you think you want to work on? I'm not letting off the hook with just one.
Oh.
And I have a couple hours.
Yeah, I'd say.
Okay, extend trust?
So, what, you're saying we're keeping demonstrating respect?
You're gonna keep those, you're gonna keep doing those.
Those three, but then you're saying adding one more.
You said this morning as a group that clarifying expectations was still important, and that you, you really hadn't focused in on that well enough. So, that's gonna remain as one of yours that you're gonna work on between now and your next master board. Okay, so clarifying expectations will continue to be one. The suggestion is extending trust. How about righting wrongs?
I'm agreeing with her. I was just gonna say, to me, righting wrongs kind of links to the trust.
They do.
To me, anyway, because I think the, the main reason that I've lost trust is because of some things that I, I myself perceive as being wrong.
Mm-hmm.
To make it a simple word.
And we talked this morning about drawing the line in the sand, and the past is the past, and how are you going to move forward? You can't move forward if you're dragging the past with you. So, are you willing to draw that line in the sand and really give it a go?
Sure.
Okay, I'm gonna ask for thumbs. Is there consensus that you're gonna do this? And with this consensus, it's commitment. You're gonna say, I will do this. Okay? I'm gonna ask, okay, fine. I'm gonna ask, why are you having a hard time? What can we do to get you over that hurdle of being able to do that?
A statement that Catherine made, um, kind of took me back a little bit. I mean, she mentioned the reason that she would support Mary because of something that happened in January.
Okay.
That kind of sticks out.
Okay, that's hard to say, we're drawing a line and move forward.
If you're still going back.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And let me say that, having said what I said, I'm now prepared to stay on the, stand on the other side of the line.
Okay?
Because there's been a lot said in this room over the last six months about who did what to whom and when, and who da-da-da-da-da-da, and I've never had that conversation with Mary. I've put it out there, Mary knows what it is, I'm willing to cross that line and scope over it.
I was planning to ask you afterwards, what is it? Because I'm not sure.
I'm happy, yeah. And I don't want to-
Right. Okay, and if it's not something you would vote on?
Right.
It can be done. So, with that, are we all ready to draw that line? And today is a new day. This is like New Year's Eve. And tomorrow's gonna be New Year's Day, or in 10 minutes, it's gonna be New Year's Day. Is it a commitment? Is it a new resolution?
Should we say it again?
Yes. Yes, okay? Ready? This is your commitment. If you're willing to make that commitment and live with it, I'm gonna say the thumbs up. The commitment is that you will draw the line in the sand. What has happened in the past has happened in the past, and you are going to move forward. Fresh board, fresh protocols, fresh agreements, and move forward. If you're willing to do that, get your thumbs up.
Should our superintendent be voting too or not?
Yeah.
Such a thought.
Yes, yes, he should. Okay, she's gonna be cautiously optimistic, Gwen is, and the rest of you are making a hundred, okay, another one that's cautiously optimistic. Okay, what can we do to get you over the hurdle?
Towards it?
I was, and, but she made a valid point, and the thing about it is what they're just, I think what they're talking about is they were equally involved. I mean, so, there's, has to be some accountability on-
On both parts, okay.
Yeah.
But they said they speak.
But, they, they're gonna speak, and they said, they both agreed that the past is past.
Yeah.
So, they're gonna find out what it is they're talking about. Put it aside and move on.
Right.
Are you personally willing to make the commitment to draw the line in the sand and move forward? That's the question. Yes?
I wanna make that commitment because you cannot relive the past. You need to move forward, and we cannot grow unless we take that next step and move forward.
Exactly. And unless you all do, you're gonna get stuck. And the kids deserve better than that.
And it really is, it, I mean, it's a choice. You might have some emotions that continue to make you angry, and some emotions that bring you back to the stuff that's happened in the past, but it's a choice that you make in your head to either pay attention to that stuff or not. And if you make the decision to continue to pay attention to that, then you're giving power to the people who committed those bad deeds or what you perceive to be bad deeds. You're giving them power over your decision making. It is up to you to decide to move forward.
And, and yet, you're the one deciding whether it's a bad deed or not. And it goes back to, what are you telling yourself in your head over and over and over and over again? Are you telling yourself, this is a group that is ready to move forward, willing to move forward, and we're gonna do it? Or are we gonna say, we're gonna do it except, and we're gonna do it but? It's your decision.
No, and let me say to Gwen, I mean, once, once Mary and I have our conversation, I may not be in a position to say the same thing I said earlier.
Okay.
But that conversation has to happen, so.
Come on, ladies, let's draw the line. And, no, she's gonna-
Ladies and gentlemen?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna ask one more time. And if not, then, those of you that are willing to make the commitment, you're gonna honor it. Those of you that are still on the fence, I'll talk to you in a minute. Okay, so all of you that are willing to make that commitment, draw a line in the sand, today starts a new day.
Can I just say?
Yeah?
I'm sorry, the reason I'm cautiously optimistic, there are conversations I need to have as well.
Okay.
And that I have attempted to have.
Okay. And if you have those conversations, are you willing to put it to rest at that, or does it determine on how that?
Based on the conversation.
Okay, all right? Okay, so those of you that are willing to move forward, draw the line in the sand, let me see your thumbs. Okay? Those of you that will work on it? Okay, thank you. And those of you who will work on it and are going to try to move forward?
You just want me to knock on my first thumb.
I want your thumb up for something.
I don't really.
Okay, she's got her thumb up. So, she's gonna work on it, and, and you're gonna move forward. I have seen such an improvement. I cannot tell you how pleased I am with, with where you are right now compared to the last time I saw you. And I thank you for your hard work, because it's important. And if we, I think we've looked at the next slide.
We have some next steps coming up.
Oh, okay, all right. Then I'm gonna just go ahead and say what's probably on the last slide, and we'll remind them. The credibility of your district depends on how you, as a board, govern the district, and how you work with the superintendent as the leadership team that you're trying to create. You need a strong leadership team so that you can face any challenge that comes forward when it comes to educating the children. They don't have the time to wait for y'all to get your act together. They're here, they need your attention now, and you need to move forward now. And that's what you've committed to do, and I'm proud of you for it. So, you can do the next part.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
All right, so just to wind up, wow, look at this, it's nine thirty o'clock.
I know.
You know, but you're gonna hate me, we didn't go through our protocols.
Yeah, I know, see, I'm-
I had all kinds of questions about our protocols.
Protocols.
Oh, oh, so you want to go, so other than the ones that had already been brought up?
Yes.
You want to discuss others?
I thought we were supposed to read them and prepare with questions and suggestions for change coming into today.
And we will back up?
Okay.
We will back up.
Thank you.
Because the, the, the questions that had come forward before were the ones that you were sent out. We are certainly able to go through any protocol that you would like to go through and talk about what you would like to see changed, so let's start there.
Okay, so, page seven? Oh, page five, my bad. Where it says, appropriate action is as follows, um, page five of our protocols. Ms. Gittens, this is in no way, shape, or form any kind of a reflection on how you handled this process when you were chair. As I read it, I noticed some problems with it. Shouldn't we have the board chair respond to an email that comes to the board even when it's not a matter that pertains to the board? Meaning, Joe Schmo sends us an email, I believe Joe, regardless of the topic, I believe Joe Schmo deserves a response from a board member, specifically the board chair, on behalf of the board and copying all of us.
Where is that at?
We need to find- Oh, sorry.
But I thought our, our procedure was that we would send it to the superintendent.
Number two, board procedures and annual reports.
Oh, thank you. B two.
What page did you say?
B two, page five. Yeah, I just need to-
Yeah, and my, my understanding was that-
Yeah, yes.
Our first line of defense was to give it to the superintendent-
Correct.
-to review, and that the only thing that we basically would say, if we responded and it came to us, is, you know, thank you for your response or whatever, and then we would send it to the superintendent.
Correct.
The items that come through that Susan sees that we all see, and the, what is it called? The board email that goes to the board?
Board office.
It was my understanding that Susan basically would, or Mary would respond to that and just say that, you know, the board has seen it, we're getting it to the superintendent.
That's why I'm asking for a change, because if somebody emails the board office, I believe that person deserves a response from the board chair and copies the board. That way, that person has confidence that the board has seen it, the board has responded. And, and all of the typical stuff, you're gonna forward it to the superintendent, you're not gonna create answers. I just feel like those board emails that come in are being responded to by Susan when they should be responded to by the board. That's, again, and not, it's not a criticism of the way you handled it. You handled it perfectly in accordance with protocols we have right now. I'm asking for a change in protocol because I believe the public deserves a response from an elected official when they email an elected official. Am I making sense?
So, you're saying instead of saying, Susan saying it was sent out by her, her name, it's sent out from the chair?
Correct.
So, I would forward it from the board office inbox to the chair?
Well, to, to, either to the chair or to all of us, but the chair is gonna respond on the behalf of the board and copy us on the response.
See, 'cause when it says there are such copies of such correspondence, will be forwarded to all the board members and with the superintendent's office, but it doesn't say anything about responding to the author of the, the procedures.
Yes, so Susan sends it out to all of us and then she copies, lets them know that she's doing that.
But nobody's responding to the person.
Correct, and I just feel like that person deserves a response from the board.
Could that response, though-
Be the same thing.
Be the same thing, could she respond and say, like we do, I'm copying the board members?
Yeah, yes.
That's what she does, and that's what I've done as well.
And it's board office.
Well, because the, the concern that would bother me is whoever is chair responds to something and hasn't, uh, doesn't have all the information from the superintendent and staff at this point. And there's a time factor.
Right. I don't, I don't think she's, I don't think she's referring to answering the question.
No, I'm not.
No.
She's just giving the response, even if the response is, I'm going to be checking on this with the superintendent and staff and provide further information, or by copy of this to the superintendent, I'm asking him to respond with the information that he requested or something.
Then at least they know that the board has-
The board has-
That can be a stock response.
Right.
We have, yes, we have received your email, and it is being forwarded to the superintendent. When we get a response, it will be forwarded to the entire board.
As much as I love Susan and cannot live without her, function without her, she is not an elected official. That's, that's kind of the point that I'm trying to make, Gwen, is that that response should come from one of the seven of us. That's really the only change I'm asking.
Are you asking for the chair to actually then, every time, type it in or respond or to send it out under the- Are you asking for the chair to actually then every time type it in or respond or to send it out under the signature of the chair?
Yes.
Send it a response.
I was gonna say, it could be that, that's what I was gonna say, that same thing.
Do it the same way she does now.
Doesn't have to be her.
Just have a half of the chair, a letter from her.
Yeah.
Like you get from senators.
Yes.
It's always signed by Senator Rubio. When I asked him about the letter, I said, he didn't seem to have any memory of it.
Because he's signed so many.
Yes, that's right.
I just know how frustrating it is to feel like you've been dismissed, you know, before I got into this role to feel like I was dismissed. And that, to me, feels like being dismissive.
So the suggestion is that it, that the responses go out under the, from the email of the chair? Is there agreement?
Yeah.
And that everything else would follow as it does now? All right, that's easy.
All right, page six, I'm not clear why the blue box is necessary. So if I get an email that was sent only to me, why am I forwarding that to the chair? Why aren't I responding and copying all the board members?
Where are you telling the blue box?
The blue box on page six. There's a.
I, we must, I must.
A green oval of this.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Oh, and then, in the flow chart?
Yeah.
We're talking about the flow chart.
Betsy, go to, go to board's.
I can't find it.
Board. Procedure being which?
The blue box where the limits.
Yeah, the one that says board member for email to the chair?
I'm sorry, it's.
The one that says board members email to chair.
And that's not what I do now.
I don't think that on that.
It's a diagram.
It's, it's six and sixty.
Yellow.
Oh, yes.
It's got a diagram like a.
Flow chart.
A flow chart, okay.
Two yellow and three.
For some of it's, for some of it's, it's on page four. It's called, it's in the procedures manual itself.
Right, and that's where I went, but I'm missing a yellow box.
It's on page four.
Yes.
These, these, it says flow chart.
These, the flow chart.
Several pages are four.
Oh.
There it is.
That's on page four.
Yeah. Oh, that's funny. Here it says six, I think it depends on which page you're looking at.
Yeah.
Yeah, the page number itself. I'm trying to recall.
Because it's like two years ago.
So what it's. I'm trying to recall why that was.
Email received by board member, what, so you're trying to recall why, but you know what it says?
Yes, I know what it says, I'm trying to recall why.
So if I get an email from a constituent, I'm answering the email, forwarding it to the superintendent, copying my, I'm not forwarding it to the chair for a response because they emailed me, they didn't email the board, they didn't email the chair. So, I mean, on emails that were all copied on, that's chair's responsibility.
Right.
But if I get an email, I'm responding.
Sometimes you don't know if they.
Sometimes I don't.
Line copy, or they're doing it which one of you.
You're right, and typically I will find that out quickly when I've copied on one of my other board members' responses and then I'm not responding. But there are circumstances where, you know, a Pinewood's mom is emailing me and I know she's emailing me and I should, I think I should be able to respond to it.
That was a decision of the board at that time. So I, we get certainly open for discussion, how would this board like to address that?
So what is your suggestion going forward?
That if, if we keep it the way it is right now, if the board is emailed, but if an individual board member is emailed, they can respond and copy board members, copy their fellow board members.
Yeah, so you move the blue box over, under the red, uh, under the red and then draw a line down to copy other board members, right? You just take out the blue box.
Just take out the blue box.
Yeah, yeah.
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 And then you change that, that last no to a yes.
Yep.
Okay, so suggestion is if an individual board member receives an email.
Yes.
Rather than forwarding it to the chairperson for a response, that person goes ahead and responds and copies all of your board members.
Yes.
Thumbs up? Easy peasy, all right, thank you, next.
Okay, page eight, I'm sorry, yeah, page eight, number five, second bullet.
This is eight on the document. It starts at social networking.
Eight, okay.
It's in the different.
Yeah, so yours is.
It says, number five, meetings of the school board. Second bullet.
Number five.
Thank you, yeah. Notify the superintendent at least twenty-four hours in advance if possible of the intent to pull an item from the regular action schedule meeting. Consent agenda, provide a memo to other board members of this intent, including the rationale for the poll. We are not doing this. We're just, we're not doing this with any sense of regularity at all. And perhaps this was a discussion that was better for this morning. But frequently I will see a board member pull an item and then pull out prepared statements in order to discuss that item at an action meeting. And, and that feels like a gotcha. If we are a team, we should be having open discussions and we should, there should be a free flow of information. I wanna know how the six of you are thinking about an, an issue going into the meeting. I don't wanna be surprised at the table and I don't wanna surprise you at the table. And I think that's the reason for the providing of a memo to your fellow board members so that they know the reason and the rationale for the poll. Am I making sense?
So let me, let me understand, so when you have a superintendent of a poll and the rationale for that, you copy our fellow board members?
Yeah, 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 but the rationale for the poll frequently has been for discussion. Well, what is it about that that you wanna discuss? That's, that's kind of.
It depends on the situation.
I understand, I, I, this is not a high and fast rule, this is, you know, there is some gray area there, I totally understand. Like, for instance, you might wanna pull the appointment of Todd Everly in order to talk about his accomplishments. Like, you know what I mean, like, fine, I get that, but if we wanna poll because, you know, you feel it violates the law or whatever, show me your research. Like, why can't I know going into the meeting where you're, where you stand on this issue? Right, shouldn't we each know how we feel about an issue when we go into an action meeting? Or should I be going in there with some intent or some knowledge that I'm gonna spring upon you at the action meeting? Am I making sense?
It, it sounds to me as though you're saying that in some cases, the spirit of the agreement has been violated in that you feel like some people are giving notice that they're planning to poll something but not really saying why, which doesn't give you time to consider, is that a reason you would agree with or to do some background information to find out?
Correct.
Responses. And in that communication, we still continue to say, board members, please do not respond.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Ms. Gittens, I'm reading your face.
And I'm formulating my response. I, I think I mentioned this morning, the question in my mind of saying, if someone presents something, there's very often the response, I need time to do my homework on it. I, I, it's, it's been a year and I'm not, I'm not sure I really understand that. If, if there's something that comes up between the time we meet, the time we look at the agenda, maybe a response to something from the superintendent's office and we as a board member feel that it needs some discussion, I, I don't, I don't know if it's, should be labeled as a gotcha as in someone's mind, it's like we need to bring this up and we have not. I, I really don't know, I don't understand doing homework.
Well, in the current, in the current protocol, it's a twenty-four hour advance notice. So currently the workshops are more than twenty-four hours before the, the action item. So that would give twenty-four hours to say, after this workshop, I still believe I want to pull this. And here's why I would like to do that. And that, that's the courtesy of people having the, the understanding of why you're pulling that so that they can decide, I agree with that and, and I'm gonna do some more information where I really disagree and I want some time to think about my response to it. That, that's my understanding of the spirit of that agreement.
And I do think it would feel like less of a gotcha if I have that explanation upfront. And because I'm not always getting that explanation. And some, listen, sometimes people are gonna forget or sometimes a last minute thing is gonna come up because you get a phone call or whatever. I, I get that this, again, is not black and white, but, but it has repeatedly happened over the past year that items are pulled without explanation to us. And either we're going to agree to live by that protocol or we're gonna pull it so that we can have clear expectations about how we are expecting each other to function at stake. Isn't that part of clarifying expectation?
So then for this particular piece of the protocol, I think we need to come to an agreement that we all, A, understand the intent and B, that we all agree.
Yep, I agree.
So let's start with the understanding. As we discussed a moment ago, I believe that the reason for that is to give people advance notice that an item is about to be pulled and some understanding of the reasoning so that they have time to decide if they agree with that or if they need to do some further research.
Just one last thing, Dr. Atkins said earlier that one of the strongest things that he is seeing in his current team that he's not necessarily seen before to this extent is the ability to air real true differences. And, and in airing those real true differences, you're able to come together and really rally behind whatever decision is ultimately made. I don't know that that happens here. I don't know that that always happens at this table. And, and it's, it's the sense that people are making last minute proposals and last minute polls without explanation that, that leads me to believe that we're not airing true differences. And if, if we're not airing those things and having those conversations openly and honestly, then it, it's much more difficult to, to really rally behind the final decision.
You're looking at me, you're.
You know, this morning was all about reading.
I know, I know. Okay. The, the consternation and the question in my mind is example, and not necessarily a poll, but presenting something and it was out there just prior to the meeting and yet when we came to the meeting, members had copies with notes all up red. And it was, the feeling was, before you can actually even say what it is, you're already, you know, it's already gonna be put aside or torn down and we've already got our rationale. And I, I understand what you're saying about not having a gotcha. I just, I, I think we need a little bit of gray, only because there are times that something will come up at the last, at last minute and we should be not feeling like we're breaking protocol if at the last minute. It's like, eh, I've thought about this, now I've gotten this email, I've heard from this people, I've done this. And I really think we need to discuss it a little more.
I've, I've said, the gray area, I've said that a, a couple of times. This is just a general understanding of our way of work, stuff's gonna happen.
So I'm not saying change it, you're just saying awareness.
Either honor it or pull it out, one or the other.
Yeah, but that still sounds black and white to me. It sounds like either you're gonna do it or you're not gonna do it.
I think she's saying she wants you to do it better.
Yeah, I think so too. I don't think it's the issue of the polls, because I know for me personally, I, I think this should stay in here. But I know that if whomever, I'm gonna say Betsy because she's my partner today. But so Betsy has a poll, I wanna know what, what she's thinking because then maybe that's gonna help me to look at it in a different light. Or, or Mary or whomever that may be, because I may not have even thought about that. So before I get there to the table, I can do some more research or whatever, because I have to research things too, my, my mind is that way. But I just, I, to me, it's a great tool to have. And I, I appreciate listening to whatever the people have to say because it can change our view.
And it sounds as though if the, if the ultimate goal is to make the best decisions possible for the good of the students, then the more time you have to think about those decisions, I, I believe that is why that's in there. Now, I understand the feeling of, okay, that prevents me from bringing something up at the last minute. And I, I don't believe that that's what's being asked. I believe it's, protocol has not been followed many, many times. And, and in some cases, there's been advance notification, however, the, the reasoning wasn't always clear. So we're asking for some clarification if you are giving advance notice of a poll. Does that sum up what you were saying?
Very much so, yeah.
And I, I still believe though too, like we mentioned this morning, that doing our, I guess being more transparent in the agenda review when possible, helps with such, for help with such. And it already has because we have lost this. So, that's.
So I believe the question is, do we keep it and work to go forward from that line, from, from the, from, from the future, to work to honor this as much as possible, knowing there will be some exceptions? Or do we say, we're not going to do this and we pull it? Did you have a?
I, I just wanna say, in keeping in mind that our protocols are guidelines. They are not statutes and they are not policy. They are guidelines and I think that using those to help us stay in track, knowing that there are always exceptions is, is probably another way of practice.
So I'm gonna ask for consensus and we'll say keeping it. If you believe that it should stay in the protocol as written, so please. Thank you.
Sorry, yeah, I have more. Um, the very next bullet item, we strive to make new and new proposals during a regular action meeting so that all board members have adequate time to review all proposals.
What number?
The same thing, the same example, the next bullet item. So Mary, what you just said is absolutely true. I mean, these are guidelines, this does not prevent any of us from, from doing anything that we wanna do. We're elected constitutional officers, we can do whatever we wanna do.
Right.
But, but what are our expectations of each other? To me, the, the making of a new proposal is maddeningly time consuming. But maddeningly in the sense that I have no patience. If you look at my answers to this question right here, how's patience with others? I had a zero there because I have none. And it frustrates me, the government.
That's a revelation.
It frustrates me, but, but very honestly. Well, yeah, and it frustrates me, the government moves as slowly as it does. However, I can't do anything by myself. And, and I need to let you know when I'm thinking of something new and I, Gwen, I think this gets to the, the issue that we had, that was had at the table when something new was placed on the agenda and we all had very little notice. I get, I get that you want your, you're reacting before I've even spoken.
Okay, I'm, I'm very sorry.
We have to listen first, right?
I'm listening, I'm listening.
When we're putting out new proposals, it's gonna hit each one of us differently. And each one of us is going to research it and look at it differently. And what you put forth is likely, whatever comes out of what you put forth is likely not going to resemble the, the ultimate outcome because six other people are going to add to that or take away from that. But, but if I'm not given the opportunity to digest what's being proposed through the, through the process that's in place, which is, I'm gonna bring it up and say, hey, is this something the board even wants to talk about? If you can't get a consensus for the board to even talk about bringing an item forward, we as a board are not talking about it. And, and then you go through the workshop process and then staff brings, brings back a proposal in the briefing process and then we vote on it at an action meeting. That, that to me is how, that to me is how good decision making occurs in a government setting like this. And, and so that, that to me is the reason why that is up there and that clearly has not been followed frequently many times over the past year. So either we leave it in there and we honor it or we take it out. Because I, I need to know what the expectations are about the way we will function with each other.
So explain to me, and if you have a thought or an idea, you're saying then, like, like the agenda review, review process, you're saying that if I have a thought or an idea like that, I bring it to an action meeting?
Very next bullet.
Okay, and, and, and I, I, I can't really explain anymore, I, I did, the, the confusion to me was, how do you know what to look at if you don't understand what it is I'm trying to get you to look at and review and do your process? And all I was saying is, if I have a suggestion, just entertain me for a minute to explain what the suggestion is. Not asking for responses, but.
That's what you do, notify board members via memo of the intent to introduce a new item before briefing meetings. Then you've told us what your idea is, we've heard what your idea is and, and now we're going to discuss it. After that memo has been provided, is, is that not, am I crazy?
It's, it's a question of if you want advance notice.
Right.
Well, exactly.
That something will be brought before the, the board for discussion.
We're talking about the action meetings.
And.
That's right.
And, and then sometimes other board members don't want to provide. And then sometimes other board members don't want to provide or are unable to provide an answer. Correct me if I could be wrong on this one. I think I know the ones we're talking about. But I think, you know, you put, you put that thing, you put that PowerPoint out there. But I didn't, I didn't know, I didn't get the intent that you were going to make, who wanted to make, we had to make a decision on it then.
And I said that over and over. I said, I just, I just want you to look at it.
Right.
However, I would like to just explain what I'm saying. Because, and this goes back to the morning situation, that the feeling of just being shut down before you even get the idea out there, that was the issue that I had. And just, just listen to me for a minute and understand what I'm saying and why I'm bringing it forward. And then go forward and rip it apart. But to just give me the respect, the listening, to hear what I'm trying to say. Because otherwise, if you look at it, you can assume I'm saying this or assume I'm saying that, instead of just, okay, let's just put pencils and everything down. What is it you want us to look at? This is what I'm asking you to look at. Now go ahead and do it. I'm not expecting that you're going to buy it lock, stock and barrel. But just let me have an opportunity to explain.
Where is that in our protocols?
Okay.
And it may be, if I could, if I could just second, then I know we have, it may be that what I'm hearing is changing the agenda without prior notification of changing the agenda. And so it's.
But there is a good amount of your time to speak and bring up a different, a new idea that is not for vote, not for action at that meeting, but for consideration going forward.
At good of the order.
Right.
Good of the order.
Yes. So I think, and I understand the situation that occurred. And I think perhaps if it had been brought up as a good of the order, instead of being added to the agenda at the last minute, then maybe that, and I'm guessing, but I'm agreeing with thinking that.
All right, I will own that. And in future, I will bring it up.
I don't know if it's owning it. I mean, I think, honestly, hearing this, I mean, I think the intention of the bullets was there. It's just that good of the order versus.
Where it happened.
Where it happened, which all that was. So, you know, in the future, we would do it good of the order, you know? But I think, like I said, I just think.
As I had previously advised the chair, I'm going to have to excuse myself.
We won't talk about it again, you should stop.
So that's actually what I was going to bring up. It should have just been good of the order.
Thank you.
And sometimes you just have to have a little grace for someone.
Thank you.
And she was, she's the chair, so I think that when you're chairing something that you're bringing forward, it's, you, you know, she's, where's she put, you know, her good of the order, I guess. It, you know, and I think that's what she was trying to accomplish. I think it's just a little grace and understanding.
And it was, and it was a learning lesson for me, that in future, I will put it in the right place. And all I ask is just.
Be one.
The only thing I was going to say, we're speaking of, this is the, at the action, action meeting.
No, it wasn't.
No, this line right here is action meeting.
Yeah, this line is, this line is the action meeting, but it ties into the next two bullets, because the next two bullets talk about how you get an item onto an agenda at an action meeting. You have the workshop where you discuss the issue and then you, staff brings back the proposal and then it comes up at an action meeting. As opposed to sitting down at an action meeting and making a motion and everybody being like, what? And not having had any time to discuss it in an appropriate form.
Okay, I, and granted, I probably, I have had perhaps a misunderstanding of some of this, but one of my frustrations has been that there doesn't seem to be an ease of myself as an individual board member putting out something to be discussed. We've really had some problems, I feel, with getting things onto, let's say, a workshop agenda to be discussed and/or a briefing agenda to, to be discussed. And so I'm wondering if there's not some tightening or some clarification to make it really clear that brand new proposals should be, I mean, it's in here, but it isn't clear cut. On, you know, I understand on protocols, they're guidelines, but if they're going to be workable, we have to have language not embodied in two or three separate bullet points. But here is the best practice of introducing a new proposal.
Can I interrupt for one second? The board attorney has to leave. The very last question I have on our protocols is for the board attorney?
Okay.
So may I ask him and then he can leave? Are we cold calling him?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so page 12. Maintenance of school board policy. The superintendent or designated administrator will maintain a three-year rotation schedule for policy review and update. Board attorney, where do we stand? In terms of the three-year review, I thought that was what we talked about.
I've been here for less than one year, so we are in the process of going through each school board policy and making sure that they are consistent with state and federal law. However, there may be a reason that you would want to bring a policy review in front of the board and have the board, you know, go through a process of reviewing its policies to make sure that they still serve the board's interests. We really, I mean, we're, we're not policymakers, so we're looking at them to make sure they're consistent, but we're not looking at them to make sure they are what you want.
And we had discussed, I think Sue Condon mentioned once about, there was at some point a rotation process. And if it's not in here, perhaps that's something we just need to say, this is our process for this number comes up here and et cetera, et cetera.
Because I know we had discussed the Neola thing and we decided not to do the Neola thing, we had decided to go with you guys instead. And I just, I haven't seen any movement in that.
So, just, well, just, just a thought. Yeah, I mentioned before that I'm looking at the whole, the way we have our grant and charter school department, you know, we're reviewing that right now. And we've got Terry Cannodice, the director there, who's got some experience with legislative actions. So something I'm going to, that we're looking at right now with Lauren is, is having her, keep this to yourself, I'm going to talk to her about.
Keep it to yourself in the camera.
Yes, in the camera.
Lauren, don't watch.
So, well, no, no, Lauren, Lauren is working on it.
Okay.
Terry, don't watch.
Oh, Terry, don't watch.
But anyway, this would be the place where that might reside. So it used to be Patty Elkin and she worked with Keith Martin, the board attorney, and they developed a process where they would work with the divisions and they would bring a section of policy forward and it would be on a cycle. So we could do a very similar thing and that's something I could talk to her about.
So it's underway?
Where she would.
Wheels are turned?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's all I needed.
And they would work with an attorney in that. So, but just to clarify, that's a separate process than what Neola was discussing and what we're talking about in terms of consistency with state and federal law. That has to be done as state and federal law changes. And so we do that as state and federal law changes. What they're talking about is more from a policy standpoint, do you still want this policy or do you think it should be a different policy?
Yes.
So that's a, sort of an evolution of the board's policy function.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this your patience?
Yeah, but it sounded big, it's hard to. I was just leaving my rubbish.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, that's fine, that's fine. So let's just, let's go back though to.
Back up to page eight. Because I think, I think what Betsy's saying is we need a little bit of, some reach to that language.
Yes.
And so that bullet should be, notify board members via memo of the intent to introduce a new item during board member comments, at a briefing meeting, or go to the order at a workshop? Would that clarify?
And I don't know, you know, I think that sometimes based on discussion and based on information that we receive, sometimes something may come to our mind or we may have had an ask or some information provided by a community member. So during good of the order is the time that we could bring that up, because we want to get it out there, but we haven't necessarily had time to send it out. So I think we need to always have a little bit of flexibility. And I understand that we all have different personalities. So I think if you could, you know, allow for a good of the order to be just that, and I don't know Carol, if you have a comment?
Yeah, I actually have a question. When you receive it via memo, is your reaction to look at it and say, oh, I want to hear more about this? Or is it, yes, I like it, no, I don't, and I'm going to make my case? Because another way of handling it would be to have, whether it's good of the order or leadership discussion or whatever, when items are brought forward by board members with questions allowed to be asked, but no decision, no discussion, but clarifying questions. I'd like us to consider for a future workshop, X, Y, Z, because I'm feeling that this is something that we need to, or I think this is heading in this direction and we need to tighten up on it. Somebody can say, well, can you give me an example of what you're talking about? What, you know, have you seen this happen? How, was it five, was it 10, was it two? You know, get clarifying questions and then it can be scheduled to be put on a workshop. But everybody's hearing it at the same time, they're not reading and interpreting it. So there's another way of handling that.
Which I think is what you were trying to do.
That's my point, is not to read and interpret, but just to listen and then interpret.
And then you actually are.
And train it forward for future.
And what do we do with it? And you may find right there at that meeting that everybody goes, yeah, right, okay, fine. No.
And it may just die right there, you know, at least with.
It's another way of handling it.
If we could, to be more specific, in this mention that if it's not, if you're not notifying members or whatever ahead of time, that it at least would be brought up last case scenario in good of the order and not as a part of the agenda. Just to clarify that process.
So clarify for me, you're suggesting we leave it as is, but add, if it is not possible to notify members in advance, it would be brought up at good of the order to, for discussion to be addressed at a future meeting?
Yep. How does everyone feel about that?
It's fine.
Okay, thumbs? Okay, thank you.
Done. Okay, two things. First of all, orientation of new board members, section eight. I think it's page 12, it's page 12 on my, I have no idea what it is.
It's all mixed up.
So, the statement has been made a number of times by new board members, that they felt that the orientation provided for, the protocol provided for, in the orientation, new school board members was inadequate. And so my request would be, since we may have new school board members in 20, that Gittens, Vaughn and Jordan somehow communicate with somebody about how you would rework this and then, maybe it would be Susan, Susan puts it together for discussion at a board workshop. But if what we did didn't meet your needs, then we need to know what it is that needs to happen and we need to make certain that we've incorporated it for 2020. So that's number one. And number two is, and this may be per Dr. Atkins, but what is being asked of the board staff today with this board is very, very, very different from what has been asked of board staff in the past. Now this, I was on the board and Mary was on the board when we went from five to seven and we only had two staff people. Essentially, essentially, staff was being asked to do the work of the board, not board members, but work of the board, plus calendars and correspondence. And we have gone to a spectrum of the Board of County Commissioners, which has an individual aide who does all of the work for the board member, to the other end of the spectrum. And I think board, staff has fallen behind. I think that they're under enormous pressure, there's a lot of overtime being accumulated. I think we really need to think seriously about what we're asking of our staff. And I think we need to codify what their jobs are. And if in fact, two people can't do what this board expects of them in terms of services, then we need to have a serious conversation about whether we want to ask the taxpayers for more money for another staffer, because we expect more of our staff than they're able to do. So I don't know where this goes. I'm just saying that with a seven-person board, with three years' experience with a seven-person board, I think it's time to revisit the job descriptions. You look at the job descriptions, the job descriptions have nothing to do with what people are doing, so. So I, yeah, I need some perspective. What are the kinds of things, and maybe Susan can share, what are the kinds of things that they're being asked to do that they shouldn't be asked to do? I don't know.
Well, it's not that they shouldn't be asked to do, it's just that in the past, board members would never, for example, well, I can think of one board member who did ask the staff to provide personal services and that didn't last very long.
You need to define personal services.
I mean, seriously.
Really?
Just look.
Dry cleaning. Get my dry cleaning.
But it's no different thing. It's no different thing, get me a cup of coffee, make this call for me, do this for me. As opposed to picking up the phone yourself and going to get a cup of coffee yourself. It's like coming in at the last minute and saying, I need to have, I have a meeting on my calendar and I need to have information for the meeting. Now, I, when I did the BuPAC presentation, I gave staff a week's heads up to do the formatting and the material, because I felt it was an important piece of material for the public and it needed to be, the contents needed to be framed in terms of the audience. I know it requires staff time to get it done, so I gave staff a week to do it. And it got done and it was a great product. But I know that not all board members, some board members come in at the last minute and say, I have a meeting, I need a piece of paper to hand out. And it, that's the kind of thing that really fries staff when they're trying really hard to do what they consider to be the work of the board. So it's, it's like, I think the people who went from five to seven understood what was, you know, what the changes were. And people who came on with seven had an expectation of what staff could do that was unrealistic in terms of the pre-existing workload. I don't know if I'm being clear. And I'm trying really hard not to point fingers, but I know it's pointing fingers. I just think that if we're going to work well as a board and we need more support than we're getting, or we require more support than staff can provide, then that's a conversation we need to have. So that's.
I think the superintendent wanted to resign.
Well, I think one of the things that we're currently doing right now, now that Lauren has come on board, Foley is chief of staff and Irma is here. You know, I did move Linda Jo down to operations to help out and that's working out real well, I think, because of what, what she's able to provide them down there. But because there certainly, there's a huge need. But before I just go automatically replacing that position, I've asked Lauren to really evaluate the whole office, which would include this. And also what I can do is, is have her. evaluate the whole office, which would include this, and also what I can do is, is have her also have some individual discussions with each of you regarding, you know, your perceived needs. You know, we have to also succession plan here. Susan is going to be leaving at, at some point, and there's a tremendous, yeah, tremendous, tremendous amount of, and this is a, it's a while off, it's a while off, it's June...
July 31st, 2020.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty.
Next to September.
So, so, yes, a lot of institutional knowledge. So we feel we have to start planning for that right now, and so that's what, that's what we're doing. So if, if it would, if this helps this conversation, I think, know that A, I've got Lauren already looking at this, but B, looping you all in into that discussion, and then we can have, you know, we can have a upcoming, you know, workshop, once we have that information and talk a little bit more about it. Because, you know, this is a governance team, even though they're on, you know, Susan and Mary are on the other side of the wall, it still has to be a team effort. We have to communicate really well together, and, and we have to be able to communicate really well with you all, and, and so we have to have the staff that, to, that's built to do that. And, and so that's, that's what we're doing right now, that work. So I'll have her loop, I'll loop her in. Or have her loop you in, I should say.
Did you know any special?
I just had a couple of questions. What, what do other seven-member districts have? I know I've spoken to some other board members at some, and they have assistants, and I'm like, oh, we don't need assistants. But I just think that it's a conversation, what other districts are doing, I, you know, best practices. I mean, I think that's one thing, Susan.
The other conversation I've got to have is, is we've got, we have the whole legal discussion, you know, about board attorney, board attorneys, staff attorneys, where do they reside, all of that. We're running out of office space as it is right now, and so that's, that's a part of all of this.
So I think a big factor is that as this district has grown exponentially, so have the activities and responsibilities of board members. You know, with the whole strategic plan thing, I mean, we are all doing, I think, a lot more than we did in the past, and there's a lot more expected and a lot more required. And that puts an increased workload on our office manager and secretary. So I think we need to also be mindful of that and find a way to accommodate for that. And if it means asking for additional help, I think then so be it, because the work has to be done. I mean, we, we have to answer to the public, and we have to have all of our information at our fingertips, and the way we do that is through the people who are doing the work. And Susan, you know, when she goes and joy, that's going to be a huge loss because of her, her long history in the district and, and the development of the institutional knowledge along the way. So I think we really need to be definitely on that part then.
Ms. Gittens?
My statement is, I will publicly apologize to Susan. The other day, a situation came up at the last minute, and I did have to ask for something at the last minute. I say that, though, to also say, we can't operate knee-jerk. In other words, if periodically something comes up and that happens, it's different than saying, once every other week, or once a month, or a year, this has happened. So I think we need to, even when we're looking at reforming or reorganizing, look at situations that have, are they out of the norm? Did they happen consistently, so therefore we need to add someone additionally to take care of that? Or was it just, you know, from time to time, things happen, and you have to ask for extra help? So that's, I just want to make sure we have that on the table, to actually look at, you know, is it consistent? Was it just kind of out of the norm? And, I don't know, I, I've heard a couple of times about, like, asking for coffee and all that. And actually, I was told that it was me that was asking for coffee, and I never did that. I mean, it was offered, do you want me to get you a cup of coffee? And after I heard that I was being overbearing and asking for this and that and the other thing, I was very, very aware of anything that I asked the secretaries and the office staff to do.
I wasn't trying to direct my comments at anybody, just saying that what you're used to in one environment where you've had a secretary in a professional environment, and you're used to working a certain way, and you come into an organization that's not set up to operate that way, sometimes there's a lack of clarity and understanding. And I just think we need to, and I think what Dr. Atkins is doing is perfect. This is a great time to sit back and look at, you know, the support.
Yeah, I, I like your idea of delineating, I don't think it needs to be in black and white here, but, but certainly, I want to see, and, and I would like to see our two, our, our ladies, our favorite ladies, be honest about, you know, not saying, well, Betsy asked me to do her ironing last week or something. No.
Is that why you lost your ironing?
Actually, I don't iron, I get my drivers for it. But I did have a big old scorch mark in the middle, which gave me a clue not to ask them. But anyway, no, but, but seriously, because I don't know, if, if there's, honestly, coming from the classroom, when, you know, how do I schedule a meeting? Oh, I do, I do not, I mean, I have never in my life had a secretary or any, I mean, we did, right, as a teacher, we did everything, including wiping down our desks after school or all, all of that stuff. So, but, you know, they're, they're so good, they spoil us sometimes, and, and so, it's very easy to, if we've been spoiled once, to kind of say, oh, do you remember when you baked all of us brownies? But no, but seriously, I, I think it really motivates us to take a look at that, although I'm, I'm not sure it needs to be in here.
I think the job descriptions are in the process of being reviewed, so that's the part that would be in black and white, but not the...
But the job descriptions don't have the, some of the little things that, either are reasonable or unreasonable on our part, and, and I just don't, I don't know.
Yes, ma'am.
Generally, we don't mind helping any of you all with anything we can, within reason. There's a lot of prep work for both Barry and myself for the board meetings, her with the recognitions, resolutions, me with the scripts, making sure the student rep is lined up and all that. And I do, Mary does advisory committees, that's a lot of work, especially at the beginning of the school year, and student advisory for me. And a lot of times, we get ourselves where we're just trying to get through one day to the next. And then, you know, we have in our mind what we're going to do that day, and then if we get off schedule, we only have so many hours in the day. And then it's like, we have a meeting, I have to have this stuff right, you know. It's hard with just two of us, and then if we have, you know, any kind of big changes. But we try to make it work, and yes, we are working long hours, but we're doing what we can.
So, you know, there's a fine line, and I'll say this for you, there's a fine line between coming in, being sociable, how are you doing, did you do that, blah, blah, for two minutes, versus sitting down to chew the fat once. I, I remember when I was teaching, and I had a big old pile of papers, and somebody would come in, even if it was a former student, then I was like, oh, my gosh, it's so good to see you. But then after five minutes of the hug and what are you doing, I'm thinking, oh, my gosh, I've got all this work to do. Hi, good seeing, I mean, that kind of thing. So I'll say it for you, I, I think there may be a little bit, as much as we love you, kind of socializing when you have work to do. Maybe you need, like, in a, in a hospital room, you know, how they have the curtain or, or, or a big old sign.
The doctor's at it, or anything.
No, but...
Noise-canceling headphones.
I told her to use my office, I never, I'm never in my office, I said, go ahead and use my office. Well, that, oh, that's a great idea, that, I, I think sometimes we need to be respectful, that we're not being rude by just coming in and going hi, and going to our office and not spending 25 minutes chewing the fat.
So do you believe that your questions are being addressed? Do you have any additions?
Lots more, but it's, it's trivia, it's stuff that can be dealt with outside, not of course.
Any other protocol issues that you would like to address today? And we will go to next steps, and there's a little slide that says next step, you don't have to see that to do next steps. So we have several items of protocol that I will update based upon the transcript and that video. Yeah, I guess there is a good reason to have that thing, so I'll go back and make sure that I have the wording that we agreed to, so we'll do that. The board meeting schedule will change after the 19th, correct? After the 19th, when the new chair, vice chair will be chosen on the 19th. Going forward, the agenda will come out on Tuesday, you'll have until Thursday to get questions in. The workshop will be on Mondays, the briefing will be on Tuesday, followed by the action meeting. All right. So I'm going to turn things back over to Ms. Gittens for Good in the Order, and thank you so much for your participation this afternoon, and this has been relatively thankless.
You have to thank Debbie.
And Betsy.
Thank you, too. I think we are at the end, let's do, go around for final comments, we're still above, within our time, we will do the finisher, I believe, I think, yes. So we're still ahead of time. I'll, I'll pick every... You want to go first?
Just one thing, I just wanted to make, bring to your all's attention that Capital Strategies Consulting contract comes up in December. So I talked a little bit more about 101, but the intent was, was, you know, I, I don't know if I should assume we're renewing the contract, but that's the direction that I'm normally be headed, and I wanted to make you aware that that would be, if we, if that's the board's desire, that's something I would bring forward at our December meeting.
And can you update us on Capital Strategies?
That's Carol Green.
Oh, yeah.
And that's, 60,000 is what it was last year, I believe it's the same coming up this year. And it's for professional services, to provide complete state legislative and governmental relations for the period of, you know, it's one year. And that's, so I, it's a similar contract coming forward, correct, Jen?
If they desire, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yep, that's it.
And you also have to say one thing about the day that, I don't know, is memorable.
Me?
Everybody will. And you can't use the, Debbie and Betsy.
That's pretty memorable.
That was very memorable.
Yeah, that's the best one.
Okay, you can look right. All right.
I enjoyed the walk over to, to Oasis.
You walked slower over than you did coming back, I was huffing and puffing by the drive.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, there?
I think we got a lot accomplished. I appreciate everybody's candor, and, and I love the Betsy and Debbie, you know, laughter is the best medicine sometimes, and I think that we were able to lighten things up and continue on. And I feel like we took another step forward today, so thank you.
Okay.
I'll go take it. That horse has been dead for a while.
No, it's not. We're going to ride that pony for a while.
Yeah, I think we had a productive day. It's, in my view, it's difficult sometimes to be honest, but sometimes there are things that need to be said, that just need to, to go out there, because I think after that, hopefully, typically, there's, there's a burden that's, that's lifted, so hopefully we can all stay true to our thumbs up on leaving the past in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Carol, you're awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, bringing FSBA's research and presentation, the faces were red, but, yeah.
I agree.
I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I love all of you very much.
And we love you too, thank you.
She's going to be hugging everybody after.
No, no, keep the camera rolling, because when we say adjourned, we're going to do a group...
No, we're not.
Listen, give me my final, give me my final thing, okay? Ms. Ju.
No, it's, I think it's been a great day, I think a very successful day, and I enjoyed it immensely, and I'm committed.
I was glad I could lighten the moment.
A few times, a few times.
I felt that, I loved it, I thought we did a lot today. I appreciate Ms. Carol, and Cindy, thank you very much for sharing the day with us, and Jo, you as well.
Yes.
But I do think that we did accomplish a lot, and as my, Betsy, you already spoke for me, so thank you for that.
Good twin.
But no, I think that everything went well, and I love everybody, too.
Thank you.
Susan.
Especially Susan.
I think today went very well, and I think you guys are making great strides to working together this time.
Cindy?
I just, I thought it went very well, and I appreciate the opportunity to facilitate, and thank you, and I look forward to doing it again.
Carol.
Come in.
Oh, wait here, before you do, Jen's writing fingers, so Jen, we never ask you anything, we just work you to death, so please weigh in and tell us what you thought about what was...
Jen's a little scary, I don't know if we want to...
No, she's just going to say negative.
Okay.
I thought that the Debbie thing was hilarious.
I think we all should have stickers that say, hello, my name is.
Ms. Halloween, she'll switch names.
I have a blonde wig, I'm coming to script.
My name is not Betsy.
I'm not Betsy, that's my mistake.
Carol, please. To be real honest, I did not know what I was walking into today. I had some suspicions, and I had been pleasantly surprised. I think y'all have made a lot of progress, as I said earlier, you've made a lot of progress from the last time I saw you all working together, or the last time I saw you all together, to a group that appears to be committed to working together. And that's a huge step, and I appreciate all of you for, for making that effort. Good job.
I can, I think I get everybody in the room. Marshall, please come forward.
Oh, no.
Yes, yes, we just want to say thank you so much. Maybe it's the groom or the ambiance.
It's the aura of the place.
It's just the aura of the place that when we come in, we do get a lot of work...
There's the gwindle.
Yeah.
Where's my mic? But thank you so much.
Oh, our pleasure.
You guys are always very hospitable and take care of us well. Thank you so much. And me, finally, I, do we have another, I think, I don't, yeah, we do have one more thing that I will do. But thank you to everyone. I think one of the things we've gotten to is the place where we can be open and honest without fear of, you know, repercussion or retaliation or whatever, just to say what's on our minds. And that's the only way that we're going to move forward, is to be able to communicate the, the... is to be able to communicate the items that we talked about demonstrating respect. I think we did that today. We clarified expectations and we listened to each other. So that is the first step in following through on our plan that we expect to do. And going forward, I, forward to work. And nothing else? We are, wait, how many, what time are we supposed to finish? At four?
Two-minute warning.
Then we're finished early. Thank you all. Have a great weekend. Our year is so long happening this month.
We have a five-week.